That was very dramatic. Thanks. Going to call this public hearing of Tuesday, February 11th. Order, Council, for the purposes of confirming the quorum, please ensure your video is turned on. This meeting is convened by electronic means, is authorized under the order of Minister of Public Safety, number M192, and as such, we're all participating by phone and remotely. Please note if my connection is lost or your connection is lost during any portion of this meeting, we'll recess the meeting until the connection is restored. And you do have the contact information to get a hold of, of, of the clerks. If, and just please let us know if you are leaving the meeting for any time so we can just maintain quorum and, and make the right voting designations. Livestream, this meeting has both video and audio. Video of council members speaking, presentations, amendments, and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. Members of the public can listen to proceedings via the livestream and YouTube link, which will be tweeted out @VanCityClerk on Twitter. Presentation, yeah, all that stuff will be available online. Lastly, following the updated guidance, on February 5th, in-person participation for local government meetings and public hearings is not permitted under the provincial health order. Therefore, speakers who will be providing comments to council will be by phone, and a moderator will assist in patching the speakers through when their term comes up. Clerks, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Stewart in the chair, Deputy Mayor Carr.
Here.
Counselor DeGenova.
Present.
Counselor Fry.
Here.
Counselor Swanson.
Here.
Counselor Hardwick.
Present.
Counselor Weeb.
Present.
Counselor Boyle. Counselor Boyle.
Present.
Counselor Dominado.
Present.
Counselor Bly.
Present.
And Counselor Kirby Young.
Present, and point of privilege, may I get IT help, please? I can't connect to the chamber.
Will do.
Thank you.
The meeting has quorum. Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much. As always, we acknowledge we're on the traditional unceded territories of Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh Nations, and thank them for having care for this land and look forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. Just so council knows, I did have a very good meeting today with, with Chief Wayne Sparrow of Musqueam, Chief Leah George Wilson from Tsleil-Waututh and Kasalem, a spokesperson for Squamish Nation, along with Santa Ono and Minister McKenna, about, all about the UBC line, which is very productive and makes you feel good when we're all working together on these territories, so I just thought I'd pass that along. Very positive meeting, too. I also want to take a moment, of course, to recognize the immense contributions of the City of Vancouver staff, who are doing such a great job, and a special tip of the hat to the clerks who are doing great through COVID-19, so thanks so much. Before we begin, there's a few things to bring to your attention. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should state whether they are support or opposed to the recommendations and the, the briefings that come forward, and if they are residents of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter, @VanCityClerk for updates and progress, so they don't miss their turn. Any comments can be submitted in writing to vancouver.ca/public-hearing-comments. And that link is also on Twitter. Finally, speakers who have pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay, and so to navigate the slides of your presentation, please say next, and we'll be, I'll help you along with that, just to make sure it goes smoothly. Let's see, a reminder that council's role is to be a quasi judicial body, which means that council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning applications or heretics designations. Council members may ask clarifying questions for speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after close of speakers. And I'll just remind counselors gently, just the two separate sections of statements and, and questions. After hearing from speakers, council may approve in principle the application, refuse the application, or defer the application for further consideration. So we have our first item up, which is the CD1.
Point of personal privilege.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Carr.
Yes, if you could let the clerk know that I also need technical help, I'm having problems connecting to the chamber as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else having problems connecting the chamber? Okay, I just wondered if it was a widespread thing? It isn't? Okay, thanks so much, and I'll make sure that happens, Counselor Carr. So we have a CD1 rezoning on 1766 Francis Street. Before we start, any council member wish to declare conflict interest? I don't see any, so I'll get the clerk down to read the application and summary of correspondence.
This is an application by McCullough Development Services to rezone 1766 Francis Street from RM4 Residential District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a nine-story mixed-use building with 84 social housing units and a childcare facility. The height of, a height of 29.28 meters is recommended, and an FSR of 4.06 is proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval subject to the conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. Forty-six pieces of correspondence in support, 25 pieces of correspondence in opposition, and five pieces of correspondence regarding other aspects related to the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 4:00 PM today.
Thanks so much. So if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, code 78622, pound sign to get on the list. I'll repeat that number throughout the evening, and it's also available on the livestream and on Twitter. So please feel free to participate. We have Carly Rosenblatt from the Rezoning Centre to present an application, and I'm just checking to see if we have speakers. Just one second, council.
It's the clerk here, Mayor Stewart. Yes, we do have speakers.
We do. We have a lot of speakers. We have 18 for this item, so I guess we should see the presentation.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Carly Rosenblatt, rezoning planner for this application, which proposes to rezone a site at 1766 Francis Street under the Grandview Woodland Community Plan. The site is located in Grandview Woodland, on the south side of Francis Street, one block east of Commercial Drive, and one lot west of Salisbury Street, shown here in red at the center of the map. This rectangular-shaped lot has a frontage of approximately 40 meters on Francis Street, and a depth of 37 meters, with a site area of approximately 1,500 square meters. The septic site is currently zoned RM4 and developed as a four-story residential building that serves low-income indigenous people. However, the building was damaged by a fire in 2017 and currently sits vacant. The site is bounded by other RM4 zone properties, which permits a maximum of 1.45 FSR and building heights up to 10.7 meters. The scale of the surrounding developments generally include two-to-four-story apartment buildings and detached houses. There is also an existing 12-story residential building, one block to the east. Grandview Woodland neighborhood is home to a significant number of urban indigenous peoples, including members of the Musqueam, Squamish, Tsleil-Waututh Nations, as well as First Nations, Métis, Inuit, and people from other parts of British Columbia and Canada. The site is well-served by transit, with the nearest bus service approximately 140 meters from the site. It's also located within three blocks of both the Adenac Bikeway and Mosaic Bikeway. The site is currently built with a four-story residential building that was originally constructed in 1986. The building was damaged by a fire in 2017 and currently vacant. This is a view from Francis Street. Neighborhood amenities include a range of parks, cultural, and community spaces, such as Native Youth Learning Center, Vancouver Native Housing Society, Urban Native Youth Association, Britannia Community Center, and a number of schools, churches, and childcare centers. The site also falls within the catchment areas of nearby Britannia Elementary and Secondary Schools, both with surplus spaces for additional students. Rezoning potential for the site is guided by the Grandview Woodland Community Plan. The first principle of the plan supports the goals of reconciliation in partnership with indigenous communities and recognizes the need to develop unique and respectful ways to acknowledge and celebrate historic and current presence of First Nations and urban Aboriginal history, culture, economy, and social well-being. The proposal falls within the Grandview Northwest Residential Apartment Area, which is composed of three-to-four-story apartments and pre-1940 character buildings. Under the plan, a six-story rental building is anticipated at a density of up to 2.4 FSR. Section 7 of the plan seeks to increase housing options for vulnerable residents, including urban Aboriginal people, to help residents of all income levels. It also allows for consideration for modest increase in height and density to assist with project viability for new social housing is proposed. This application is proposing to rezone the site from RM4 to CD1 to permit the development of a nine-story mixed-use building with social housing and before-and-after-school childcare. The building references a Kosalish-inspired basket weave design and features an overlay of indigenous artwork. It has been designed to incorporate First Nations motifs and references the basket weaving tradition celebrating the first inhabitants of the area. The overall floor area would be approximately 6,080 square meters and have a density of 4.06 floor space ratio. The proposal consists of 84 social housing units with a range of studios to four-bedroom units and before-and-after-school childcare opportunities in the ground-level amenity area. The applicant is also proposing new sustainability innovations with a mass timber construction design and striving to achieve passive house certification. In addition to providing 84 social housing units, the proposal features multiple common amenity areas, both at grade and on the seventh level. The ground-floor amenity area is anticipated to be designed to accommodate a 20-space licensed school-age care program for children aged 5 to 12 for before-and-after-school care. It's intended to be owned and operated by Vancouver Native Housing Society in partnership with a childcare provider. Adjacent to the indoor amenity level at grade, the proposal also includes a ceremonial space in the form of a sweat lodge and community gathering space surrounded by landscaping. As part of the Restart Smart Vancouver initiative in response to COVID-19, this project will contribute to approximately 294 new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. This project will exceed the city's definition of social housing with a minimum of 32% of the units rented to households with incomes which fall under the BC Housing Income Limit Level Hill. This slide shows the BC Housing Hill's maximum income eligibility threshold for 2021 and the associated maximum rent affordable to those households if they are paying 30% of their gross income on housing. These maximum annual household income levels are $55,500 for a one-bedroom or less and $78,000 for a three-bedroom unit. By comparison, the CMHC survey of buildings in the east side of Vancouver shows that, on average, the private apartment average rent on the east side of Vancouver is affordable to household income of $71,840 for a one-bedroom or less and $104,120 for a three-bedroom unit. The average private apartment rents require an income approximately 25% higher for a similar unit type compared to the maximum Hill's unit rent. The applicant is seeking to deliver a range of units from studios to four-bedroom units at deeper levels of affordability should the project be successful in obtaining partner funding. A pre-application open house was waived for this application due to COVID-19. However, following submission of the rezoning application, a city-led virtual open house was held in September 2020 and attended by approximately 428 people. The application drawings and details were made available online following application submission, along with my contact information in a form to easily submit feedback. In total, we received approximately 387 pieces of feedback. We heard a variety of comments throughout the review of this application. Key themes of support included the provision of affordable and culturally relevant housing for indigenous people, building design which references indigenous culture, building height and density, passive house targets, number of family units, and proximity to transit. Key themes of concern included building height, density, massing, and number of parking spaces. Members of the public raised some concern with the proposed height and density of the building, noting it is out of scale with the existing neighborhood. As seen on this slide, the form of the building includes a primary six-story base with a secondary three-story volume that has a smaller floor area and a setback approximately 10 feet from the floors below it. Above the ninth story is a mechanical penthouse to support the passive house building design and achieve a high level of sustainability. To ensure a softer transition into the neighborhood context, the side yard setbacks proposed are approximately double the recommended setback in the community plan, going from seven feet to 14 and 16 feet. This slide illustrates those differences, the pink dash line showing what is anticipated under the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, and the solid green line representing what the applicant has proposed. This extensive setback allows for less overlook into adjacent properties, significant landscaping space, and helps ensure more sunlight can be accessed on Francis Street. Appendix B of the report contains conditions ensuring the building setbacks are maintained, landscaping further refined, and privacy concerns are addressed at the development permit stage. While the Grandview Woodland Plan allows for a six-story building, the extra three stories help the project viability to deliver social housing units. This is another comparison in Plan View, showing how the building has setbacks on the property line in comparison with what is permitted under the community plan. The dashed pink line shows that the building footprint would be under the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, and the solid green line shows the building footprint proposed by the applicant. These extensive setbacks allow for greater landscaping opportunities, access to sunlight, and allows for increased tree retention. Some neighbors had concerns around the number of parking spaces proposed. The application will meet the city's parking bylaws. The site is well-served by public transit, as illustrated in this slide. It is located nearby several bikeways, including the Adenac Bikeway, and the nearest bus stop is located 140 meters from the site. In summary, staff recommend approval of this application to rezone 1766 Francis Street from RM4 to CD1, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report, as it meets the intent of the Grandview Woodland Community Plan with respect to the delivery of social housing and supporting the city's goals of reconciliation. If approved, the application would contribute 84 new social housing units and a childcare space for before-and-after-school care. Before I conclude my presentation, I would also like to note a minor error was made in the report summary, which references the height the applicant applied for of 26.7 meters instead of the height staff recommended, which is 29.28 meters, which includes the height and the base of the building to the top of the rooftop mechanical area. This error is limited just to the report summary section. Staff and applicant team are available to answer any questions. And as a reminder, there is a memo that was issued for this project, which speaks directly to how the Grandview Woodland Community Plan applies for the site. Thank you.
Thanks so much for the presentation. Is the applicant team here to speak?
Yes, we're here.
Great, thanks. Did you just want to answer questions? Is that the idea? No?
We have a brief presentation.
Oh, great, okay. And council, just so you know, we have been kind of checking into the rules of the, of the public hearings, and so I'll be asking applicants to turn their videos off, they're not on at this point, just so it doesn't give them any advantage over all the other speakers who have to call, call in by phone. So if you hear me saying that, that's why. And if I can go to the applicant now, please go ahead with your slide presentation.
Great, thank you, Mayor Stewart. We have an oral presentation. My name is Katie Fabris from McCullough Development Services. We're representing Vancouver Native Housing Society through the development of this project. To begin, I'd like to introduce VNHS's Board President, Richard George, to provide some opening remarks.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Stewart and members of council. First, I'd like to acknowledge the land I'm speaking to you from is on the unceded territory of the Musqueam, Squamish, Tsleil-Waututh Nations. I thank them for having cared for this land that is now caring for me and my family. My name is Richard George. I am the president and of the board of directors for the Vancouver Native Housing Society, a position that I've held for the past 14 years. I'm here today to share some important context with you for the 1766 Francis Street rezoning proposal to underscore the significance and benefits of this project and why it deserves your support. As you may be aware, the 1766 Francis Street building was home to 27 indigenous families prior to a tragic fire that caused irreparable damage to the building just days before Christmas in 2017. Immediately following the fire, VNHS made sure that all residents were relocated to safe, alternative locations, had food, clothing, and personal supplies, and were still able to celebrate by hosting a Christmas party for the displaced tenants. Within a few weeks, VNHS ensured all were in affordable, safe, long-term locations that met their needs. In subsequent months, VNHS considered what would be the best way to turn this tragedy into a good news story. Now, the blueprint for redevelopment that our team has developed does just that by proposing a new building that is large enough to welcome not only those residents who were displaced by the fire, but also makes room to house more than 50 other indigenous individuals and families in need. With 100% of the units to be rented at rates geared to low to moderate tenant incomes, this redevelopment will help fill a significant and growing need for affordable rental housing operated by and for indigenous people, members of our community who continue to bear the brunt of this city's affordable housing crisis. With a vision to support environmental and social sustainability through affordable, accessible, and high-performance housing, this project speaks to the many ways in which VNHS is committed to meeting the needs of urban indigenous people in Vancouver, as well as the larger community in which we operate. For example, we are pursuing the inclusion of a licensed before-and-after-school care facility to be operated by a provincial leader in Indigenous childcare, the BC Aboriginal Childcare Society, onsite, bringing high-quality and culturally appropriate support to residents and neighboring families. Further, this project embraces sustainable design and enhances it through deliberate measures that are respectful to cultural traditions as well as being climatically appropriate and environmentally smart in keeping with many indigenous teachings around environmental stewardship. VNHS has commissioned a building featuring high energy, I'm sorry, featuring energy-efficient passive housing design with mass timber construction, which I believe will set a new green building standard for this type of building, housing. Finally, I want to emphasize that this redevelopment is an important opportunity to contribute to a more affordable, resilient, and inclusive Grandview Woodland. Under Vancouver Native Housing Society's leadership, this development will ensure that current and future urban indigenous residents will have a permanent, affordable, and welcoming place to call home in Grandview Woodland and to be able to enjoy all the benefits that come with it. In the face of existential threats caused by climate change, colonization, and ongoing systemic discrimination against indigenous peoples, these homes at 1766 Francis will give expression to the strong and enduring legacy of indigenous people on this land we now call East Vancouver. That concludes my opening remarks. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your words. Anything else from the applicant?
We're available and happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Great, okay, so I'm going to go to the queue. If council would like to ask questions to staff or the applicant, please put yourself on the list, and remember, this is the only chance you have to ask applicant, the applicant question. So I've got Counselor Hardwick up to five minutes, questions to the applicant or staff.
Thank you very much. I'm curious about the, the building that was damaged in the fire in, in 2017. It was only built in, in 1986, according to the report. I'm curious, what was the extent of, of the fire? And I'm just curious if, why it has remained empty? I understand you've, you've made plans to develop it, but I was curious why it's remained empty over these number of years? How bad the fire was, the damage?
Thank you, counselor. Yeah, thanks, Dave.
Yes, so the, there was nine units completely destroyed and many others that suffered smoke damage. The fire burned through the roof. The, the building was 32 years old at the time, and our, our building life is typically mimics the life of the mortgage, which is 35 years. And then we look at redevelopment because of the unaffordability that is typical in urban indigenous housing because our rents are so highly subsidized. So we look at creating larger buildings with more density so that we can afford to keep the rents at an operable level for, for the tenants. So the question was, it was three years earlier than typically proposed redevelopment, and we decided that with our insurance, we would still not be able to receive funding to put sprinklers into the building. So that was another negative thing. We didn't want tenants to go back to a building that had experienced a serious fire to, to rebuild building without sprinklers involved.
That makes sense. Yeah, no, that makes sense, and I think back to 86, which was when we were getting into the leaky condo phase as well in terms of our building envelopes. I was just curious about what happened with that building because 1986 doesn't seem that old to me. Thank you very much for your answer.
Thanks so much. Counselor Boyle, up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering, just a question for the applicant. I'd love to hear more about the ceremonial space that's being planned for the, for inclusion in the building.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that question. It's Dave Eddy again. So one of the things would be a sweat lodge. And also, there'll be other indigenous enhancements, artistic and cultural, spiritual enhancements throughout the building. It was already noted by Ms. Rosenberg that we would have indigenous art kind of embedded in the basket weave design of the building. And we also look at other cultural enhancements and artistic enhancements using local indigenous artists to bring forth some of those designs. We have a sweat lodge in our, one of our other buildings known as Squatch Eyes Lodge. You, you may know it. It's also an art gallery and hotel and 24 artists and residents in the program. That sweat lodge is on the sixth floor of the building, and this one will be on the ground floor. And also, we will probably use similar form of heating to heat the rocks for the, for the sweat lodge, and that is with a potter's kiln, so we don't get the fire department on our case.
Sounds good. And, and a unique piece that we haven't heard of in other projects so far for this council, so appreciate getting to hear a bit more of those details. Thanks so much, Dave.
Thank you. Onto Counselor Fry, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and thanks for joining us here. And, and Dave, nice to hear your voice. I, you know, I recall that fire and how horrible it was and the outpouring from the community and the fundraisers and, and, and the time of year. It was, it was, I'm glad to hear that everybody was housed appropriately and, and, and glad to see you were now working on a, on an exciting new vision for the site. I was wondering, actually, you know, I'm familiar with McCullough Developments, quite familiar. And I, I was hoping maybe, and I think it's a pretty compelling story about who McCullough is. I was hoping maybe McCullough could just share a little bit about, a little bit about the company, because I think it's germane to this.
Sure, thank you. So McCullough Development Services is Sure. Thank you. So McCullough Development Services is a development services nonprofit society. We are affiliated closely with McCullough Housing Society, who's been a nonprofit operator in the province of housing for many years. And we started as a group who developed our own housing for McCullough Housing Society and saw a need for. Working with other societies and indigenous groups across the province. And so we began doing development services consulting as a result of that. As a nonprofit, we are able to reinvest our profits into other housing projects that are affordable across the province.
Thanks for indulging me, Ms Fabris. I thought that was important to highlight because I, I know that you guys come at this work with a very indigenous lens. And very sort of place-making and place-based. And I think that's really important for this project. I'm wondering about the decision to go with passive house on this project. Is this, can you, are there specific benefits that you're contemplating from having this project as a passive house?
Sure, I can answer that. And then Akeem and Amala from GBL Architects can fill in any gaps. One of the key components of pursuing the passive house and the mass timber was to look at some of that indigenous value of ensuring that we were respecting. The environment and, and building a socially conscious building. The, as a nonprofit operator, keeping operating costs down is a really important component. So we wanted to make sure the passive house allows for higher standards of comfort, like stable air temperature. And it allows us to have lower energy costs, which relate to lower operating costs so that we can keep the building as affordable as possible.
Awesome. And I guess lastly, the, the application mentions seeking senior funding. Perhaps this is a question for Mr Eddy. What kind of, of, of funding are you hoping to secure and from whom and what options are available to support indigenous housing for these at the site?
We, we are looking to B C Housing and the Indigenous Housing Fund, which is. Quite a, quite a generous fund in, in relation to others. And it would allow us two hundred K a unit in funding. And we, we look to other folks too, like F C M Federation of Canadian Municipalities. Especially through environmental portion of the funding as they do support that. And then also we'll be looking to other sources, maybe the, the Ministry of Children and Families. For some help with the childcare before and after school center. And so we feel like with the, with the combination of this funding and some others, we will go to different areas for. Funding for cultural and artistic enhancements. So we feel like a full package of funding is available in this greatly needed housing.
That's great. Thanks, Mr Eddy. And lastly for me, just location-wise, you know, as, as I know the neighborhood quite well and looking in. Sort of at the amenities around, you've, you know, got Britannia, X P, Raycam, Onya, the Friendship Center. Is, is this a highly desirable neighborhood for indigenous families, do you feel?
It is the, the largest neighborhood in Vancouver that, or, or the neighborhood, neighborhood in Vancouver. It houses on a per capita basis, the largest amount of indigenous families. And amenities such as the Reach Medical Center and the Britannia Senior Secondary, Grandview Woodland Schools. We, we have an arrangement with Britannia Senior Secondary, for example. That through other sources of funding, we're able to provide a laptop computers for graduating indigenous students. Moving on to a post-secondary education. So we're well embedded in this neighborhood. And as I said, it's, it's the, the neighborhood in Vancouver that is known as the one that, as the largest indigenous, urban indigenous population.
Thanks so much, Mr Eddy. Thanks. Councillor Swanson, five minutes.
Yeah, thanks so much for the presentations. I just have two questions for the applicants. Number one. Is this going to be a pet-friendly building?
Absolutely.
Yahoo. Okay. The number two is. Are you going to be able to have any units at the welfare and disability shelter rate?
Oh yes, very much so. I, I might ask Katie for the breakdown if you required that. But it, it's, it's all rent geared to income. There is no, for example, low end of market units in here. It's either shelter rate or it's hills, housing income limits.
Do you have any idea what percentage would be shelter rate?
Maybe.
We can let you know that many of the tenants who would be returning to the building would be returning near shelter rates. The building will be targeting one hundred percent at rent gear to income rates to allow for tenants who, who do have lower incomes. At or close to shelter rates to live in the building.
So what I'm concerned about is sometimes when you say rent geared to income. You can have, you can have all the rents geared to income and then choose tenants that are making two hundred grand.
And there's, there's nothing in it for us to make money on this building. This is a traditional. B C housing, fully subsidized building. So we're not going out looking at this as a social enterprise or some way of. Generating income to support anything else or any other housing responsibilities that we might have. So.
You are, so you are going to have some shelter rate units.
No question about it.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's all for me.
Thanks, Councillor Swanson. Councillor Bly, up to five minutes.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. I'm actually just going to focus my questions on the. Childcare portion of the presentation, the, the application. I'm, I'm just curious, what will be the capacity of the childcare, recognizing that it is before and after-school care?
Twenty students, twenty children.
Okay, great. And my question further to that is, it seems to me that this is. A real added amenity. That's my assumption, but I just would like to understand more from the perspective of the applicant. Why was it a priority to bring before and after-school childcare into the development plan?
Because this, this is a family building. We recognize the, the, the dearth of childcare opportunities. Even in this neighborhood, we, we really went all out on this. And when we found an operator, we significantly changed the design of the building to accommodate the operator's needs. And the, the needs of the city of Vancouver. As, as you may know. Licensing a childcare is no mean feat, especially in the city of Vancouver. So we had to jump through a lot of hoops. And we were happy to do this and happy to make those architectural changes. And, and I just wanted to say to Jean that we, we are not allowed, we wouldn't be able to house anybody who made. Any significant income.
Thanks. That hopefully that's helpful for Councillor Swanson to hear as well. I just, and then just further to that is. Is, will the childcare be available to the broader community or is the goal to have it available, maybe first right of refusal to the people living in the building?
It'll be indigenous-specific. And whether or not it goes outside the building depends on how many applicants in the building that we have.
Okay, and you may not know the answer to this. Just a final question is typically what, what, what does happen to school-aged children who do not have available childcare? Before and after school?
Well, we have to, sorry?
In your experience?
Yeah, in, in my experience and. They, they have to scramble. They have to find friends. They have to find neighbors. They, and, and they're very often, really, it's very hard on the, on the pocketbook as we know. Not only in B C but throughout the country. So it's, it's a great hardship on, on parents of school-aged. Elementary school children and kindergarten children.
Right. Okay. I think that's probably my time, but I appreciate your answers to my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Last one, Miss Councillor Kerr.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And all my questions have been asked and answered except for two. There was some background noise.
Just have some background noise. So just get all council and staff to just check to see if they're muted. Okay, thanks so much. Go ahead, Councillor Kerr.
Yeah, so my first one is to staff and it's regarding shadowing. I noticed that there were diagrams in the, in the report around this and it seems like most of the shadowing issues are on the. Street frontage and do they go into the yards? I, I know there's mitigation on this, but do they extend into the yards across the street or not? I couldn't tell.
Yes, this is Pat Chan, speaking development planner. Yes, they will, they will extend into part of the yards. Across the street, across Francis Street. The, but the intent, it's how we weigh the hierarchy of shadowing and with city staff, it's. First of all, it's public realm like parks and then this sidewalk, the second tier, and then it's private property. So in this case, we recognize a shadowing both the sidewalk as well as people's yards. But in order to sort of minimize the impact of shadow, we've carved the, the seventh, eighth and ninth floors back. Quite a bit in the front on the Francis Street elevation in order to sort of shorten its shadows a little bit as it cast north. And the building as Paulie has shown just now tucks in on both sides. And the seventh, eighth, ninth floors tucks in even more, sets back even more on the east and west side of it to, to make the, the shadows less wide. And so a bit more of the public sidewalk would be sort of sunlit.
Right. Okay. And for, and for the shadowing, is it, is it less into the yards across the street? Is it less so in the summer than in the winter?
It will be less in the summer than it would be in the winter.
Yes, did you know in the summertime, I know that this is a equinox. So is it in the summer, would it extend into the yards or no?
In the summer, it'll likely stay off the yards itself.
Right. Okay, okay. Got to know. And to the applicant, I appreciate all the questions asked about the, of the housing. Those were on my list to ask too. And, but, but I'm interested also about the landscaping and the fact that there is more space for landscaping, as was noted in the report. Some, a fair number of trees are going to have to come down. So, you know, can you just perhaps describe for me the type of landscaping that is being proposed here? Are there gardens, including food gardens? Or is it trees mostly? I'm just curious about that. Especially as food assets are increasingly important within our city and the world.
Thanks for that councillor. I'm going to see, we don't have our landscape architect on the line, but we do have our architects. Amala and Akeem, if you want to comment on that.
Yes, thank you. So on the east and the south side, predominantly the play areas for the childcare program. Now, on the west side, there's a buffer zone with trees and high shrubs to offer against the adjacent properties. And on the north side, there will be private patios with street access. And general, the theme for the landscaping is to support a gardening program where tenants could grow their own food. And also to grow traditional indigenous medicines and plants that could be used in ceremony. And that theme is carries through to the rooftop, rooftop amenity where there's further. Opportunities for tenants to grow their own food and also more childcare spaces for smaller children.
That's, that sounds good. That's great. Okay, thank you. That's all my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks so much. And that's it for questions from councillors. Just before we move to the next part of this hearing, I just wanted to check, we do have an unidentified caller, six oh four seven. And it, the number ends in one six. Just wondering if you could identify yourself. Otherwise the clerk will remove you from the list. I think you're currently on mute. Okay, clerks, I don't have a response there. So you might, I might just remove that person and then if they can call back in. Great. Thanks so much. And, okay, council, now we're moving on to. Sorry, just let me get my screens lined up here. We're just moving on to the public now. We have a number of speakers on the line to provide comments on this item. The code to call in is one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, participant code seven eight six two two hashtag. And we're going to move to speaker one. If I can just pull this up here, we have Alexandra Kendurka, Alexandra Kendurka on the line.
Good evening, members of council and guests.
Hi there, we can hear you. Please go ahead. Yes, you can. We can hear you. Go ahead. Yep.
As mentioned, my name is Alexandra Kendurka and I've been a resident of the city of Vancouver for over twenty-five years. Starting as part of the rental community and then the past ten years as a homeowner. Currently, I'm living on Adenac Street at a distance of three hundred and fifty meters from one seven six six Francis Street. The purpose of my speaking today is to show opposition, however reluctantly, as I'm not opposed to the changing of the rezoning. But want to request the council to reject the building as proposed height of nine stories. As mentioned previously, the mechanical is on the roof of the building, which adds the total height of ninety-six feet. Currently, the existing building is thirty-five feet and this is an increase of sixty-three percent, which is not a modest increase in height and density. As outlined in the summary and neighborhood plan. Neighborhood contacts is what is being taken away by allowing a building of this height in this location. On page thirty-three of the summary, the community plan, item five, calls to allow buildings up to six stories. To provide secured rental housing while protecting the character, streetscape. The location at Francis Street is mid-street and flanked by buildings ranging from two to four stories high. Majority built in the mid to late eighties and not to be replaced probably anytime soon. There are numerous examples of rental and social housing buildings outside of the downtown east side, which has either been approved. Or the city of Vancouver is renewing, is reviewing their development application. Only one is over six stories and it is on the nineteen hundred block of East Hastings. And at eight stories falls within the community plan recommendation. To note, the community plan recommends no greater than four stories as you head east along Hastings Street. There are no fewer than ten approved or in development applications in place for non-market rental housing locations in East Vancouver. That are six stories or less. There's two on Renfro Street, twenty-six oh three and two six five five. Two five four three and two five eight three Renfro Street. Eight one five Commercial Drive, thirteen oh three Kingsway, which is again by the same architects G B L. Four nine oh two James Street, Little Mountain is six stories. One five three five and one five five seven Grant Street is five stories. Two nine two four Venable Street has two rental buildings, six stories each, and eight three five East Hastings is four floors. My neighbors and I live in a pocket of Grandview Woodland, you know, between Venable's and Hastings. And then we've got Victoria Commercial. We've got fourteen social and thirty-eight rental housing buildings. And by setting the president to approve buildings that are almost a hundred feet in height, the dynamic of our special area is changed. It was mentioned earlier, a thirty-five-year plan for buildings and redevelopment is considered. Which means major changes in the next ten years, as most of the buildings were built in the eighties or earlier. Our area is unique with single homes, townhouses, low-level housing and retail. Six floors is well within the community plan to keep the neighborhood contacts while adding the homes much needed for our community. I request that the city of Vancouver does not select one seven six six Francis Street as a precedence to change the standard. To which the city has already been following in previous areas and within the Grandview Woodland area by not exceeding six stories. This concludes my comments. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I don't see any questions on the queue for you, so I'm going to thank you for participating and move to the next speaker. Council, next up is speaker number two. I'm sorry, I've just got my, just trying to pull my list up here. I keep clicking on the wrong thing and I did it again. Okay, we have Ariella Friedman, speaker number two, up to five minutes, please.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Hi, dear council, my name is Ariella and I'm opposed to the development proposal at seventeen sixty six Francis. I want to make it clear that I am not opposed to indigenous housing or social housing. In fact, I have lived right next door to seventeen sixty six Francis for twenty one years and indigenous and social housing has always been part of this community. As well, I'm an active volunteer and I volunteer on the Development Advisory Committee for Britannia and several other committees at Britannia. So why are we having this discussion now? Well, we wouldn't be here if there hadn't been a fire over three years ago. It's fire that was started by kids living in the building playing with matches. When the fire happened more than three years ago, it was my building right next door, seventeen thirty eight Francis, that sheltered people, provided blankets and clothing and food until emergency services took over and fundraised after. We care, we are a community, we are all in this together, and yet we all want to belong. The fire didn't destroy the entire building, in fact, most of it still stands. Only days after the fire, we saw lights on in the building. We were so surprised that repairs didn't begin shortly after. If there is such a critical need for affordable housing, why wasn't the building repaired rather than three years sitting empty? Everyone, everyone has long been rehoused and resettled. Another thing, why is the developer allowed to present renderings that remove the apartments behind? The four-story apartments in front, the four-story apartments on the east and the four-story apartments on the west? The rendering presents my building, which is my home, on the west side as a washed out grey light. That is so misleading. It dehumanizes us elders and people who make up this neighbourhood. We are more than a washed out grey light, we are not represented. Basically, there is the length of a large car separating our buildings to the fence line. Please picture that, a car, the length of a car, that's all. There are no large scale green zones to prevent catastrophic spread from an oversized nine-story building on fire. And I shudder to think what would happen with an earthquake. Shape your city, that's what you tell us. While I do know is that this community has spoken up over and over and over again to shape the city through the city of Vancouver's own funded Grandview Woodland Citizens Assembly and through the No Towers campaign. You, the city, have also spoken up through the Grandview Woodland Community Plan and the city's existing plans and policies and zoning. So why does their zoning variances, building permits and operating permits and dollar signs overtake our communal desire to keep neighbourhoods as neighbourhoods? This is not Yelltown or Downtown or Metro Town or Brentwood. This is not a neighbourhood of privilege and detached homes and green sprawling lawns. This is a working class neighbourhood of two to four story wood frame rentals or owner occupied and two to four story wood frame mixed dwellings. This is a neighbourhood where everyone wants to belong, where everyone wants to see the sky and breathe the air and look at the trees and hear the birds sing. This is not a main commercial street or a main thoroughfare. This is a side street, a side street, a designated neighbourhood. A nine-story building is out of scale, it does not belong here. Social housing belongs, indigenous housing belongs, it's always been here, but not nine stories. Makola, I am asking you to withdraw your variance application. Please, go back to the drawing board and construct a four-story wood frame building so that we can be a community together, a community where we all belong. City council, I am asking you to reject the zoning variance. Shape the cities that align to your own plans and policies so that we can all belong. Finally, I just want to point out that last summer, Makola Housing Society and the city of Langford worked together to develop new homes for indigenous families. And at that time, Premier John Horgan said, and I quote, "Housing is the foundation on which people build their lives and everyone in our community deserves a safe, secure and affordable home." Everyone in our community, everyone in our community. We are all the community, we are all two to four stories.
Thank you.
A four to six story building belongs, a nine-story building that is a match fire and earthquake hazard does not belong.
Thank you, that's, thanks very much. I don't see any questions for you, but I want to thank you for participating today. And I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Uh council, we have Jack R. King. Next.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and councillors.
Hi there.
I'm a resident of Grandview, two blocks from seventeen sixty six Francis, and I'm opposed to the development as currently proposed. My issues are its height and more importantly, the fact that this proposal lies in the face of the social contract developed with the neighbourhood in the Grandview Woodland Community Plan. Page eighty five of the approved plan describes this particular area as having, quote, "leafy streets, character buildings and a low scale form" and goes on to state that additional housing opportunities will be supplied through, quote, "sensitively integrated duplexes, townhouses and other lower scale forms." No one here can possibly argue that a nine-story building set in a side street of two-story houses and small apartment buildings is either lower scale or sensitively integrated. The site of the proposed development falls within what the community plan calls "the northwest apartment area of the Grandview core." Page ninety six of the plan outlines specific policies suitable for that area. The first line of those policies states that council should, quote, "consider applications for one hundred percent secured rental housing as follows: height up to six stories, density up to two point four F S R," end quote. This proposal meets neither of those policies. I think it's worth mentioning at this point that the northwest apartment area of the Grandview subarea was made up out of whole cloths by the planning department without any consultation with the community. This area does not exist in the original Emergence Directions document, nor was it discussed in the subarea workshop, and it was not mentioned in the Citizens Assembly's final report. It appears for the first and only time in the planner's final plan. And even though this whole apartment area turns out to be purely an invention of the planning department, even they are now ignoring it like yesterday's news. In the broader context in which the development is just a part, we need to look at what a community plan is supposed to be and what it is supposed to do. In the introduction to the Grandview Woodland Plan, it states that the plan, quote, "sets out a framework or a course of action to manage change in a community in a manner that reflects community values, good planning practice and the particulars of the place itself," end quote. If the six-story limit on Francis Street reflected community values and good planning practice in two thousand and sixteen, we need to be explained why those values and practices have apparently changed so much over so short a time. More generally, we are told over and over again that the purpose of a community or a city plan is to give certainty to all parties. But we know, having watched the various community plans being implemented over the last twenty years, that the only certainty is that developers will ask for more than is in the plan and that Vancouver City Council and the city planners will approve their demands. The Grandview Community Plan was started in July two thousand and eleven and was finally approved in July twenty sixteen. During those five years, hundreds of thousands of persons' hours were put into the discussion and I'm certain that the cost of the city ran in the millions of dollars. And yet, for much of the last four years, city councils and the city planning department have simply ignored what the plan says. Approving or planning to approve significant changes to the plan and the agreements that were negotiated so fearfully. Finally, the developers of the current proposal knew perfectly well in advance what the community plan said was appropriate. It did not come as a surprise to them, they simply ignored it. City planning also knew perfectly well what their own document says and they too simply ignored it. If there is to be any respect paid to the consultation process, this council must reject this proposal and instruct planning to work with the developers on a six-story, six-story building. Any other decision is telling the people of Grandview that all their ideas and their hard work on their community plan was worth nothing at all.
Thank you. You do have a question from councillor Hardwick. Councillor Hardwick, go ahead, up to five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. King.
Good evening.
Was there any opportunity for the community to significantly weigh in on this application? As you said, the community would have, up to six stories would have met met the requirements of the community plan. I'm just interested in meaningful consultation around this particular application.
Well, we had, we had the online public or the open house. So we could submit ideas then, I guess, and many of us did. But it doesn't seem to say that we got very much good work out of that.
In comparison to how many hours spent on the community plan, would you estimate?
Oh, tens of thousands. I mean, thousands of people were involved and it went on for five years, so yeah, an enormous amount of time.
In the staff presentation, they, it stated that this application did meet with city priorities, namely in reconciliation and affordable housing. Do you believe that those priorities of this council should trump the community planning process?
No, I don't, because mainly, within the community plan, there are areas of Grandview not, not three or four blocks from the current proposal where it's possible to build ten and eleven story apartments, which could be used perfectly for this purpose. I mean, Hastings Street, for example, is specifically described as such an area in the plan.
But this land is specifically owned by the proponent and who are clearly looking to maximize the the site coverage and and number of units.
I, I understand that, but I believe that they could certainly get a lot of units in six stories.
If you could, I say you, I mean, the respect for the consultation process is something that, that you know, I've, I've spoken extensively about my concerns about about the lack of trust that this approach is is bringing to the community. Is there, is there another way forward? Is there a path that would make the community happy that that you believe would give, really, what I, what I heard from quite a very good presentation and words from the applicant is really about being able to give the most to this segment of the community. Is there, is there a path forward that you can see?
Well, there is, and I had earlier suggested in correspondence looking at the use of sixteen eighty East Hastings, for example. I understand that there are covenants on that property for use by U N Y A, but I can't, I can't imagine there should be any difficulty with U N Y A and Vancouver Native Housing working together to build something like an eleven or twelve story building there that could have all the facilities that are necessary and that would meet the terms of the community plan.
You spoke about the social contract with the city. I'm interested in trying to find a path between that social contract and respect for the consultation process. Do you, do you still think of this swap as as a potential solution to that? And do you have any parting words on on the impact to the, to the social contract with the city between the community and the city?
Um, I, I do, I do think that it would be a very worthwhile exercise for for planning to get together with with Vancouver Native Housing Society and ANYA to discuss the possibility of building this proposal on sixteen eighty East Hastings. I think that would be well worthwhile. I, I think the, we have had over the years many problems with with respect to the community plan and this is just the, the next black eye that we see, unfortunately.
Well, thank you very much for answering my questions today.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. There's no other questions for you, sir, so I appreciate you calling in today to participate. And we're going to move to our next speaker, who is Stephen Boas.
Hello, Mayor and councillor. Could I have my slides up, please? I've sent them into the clerk previously.
Okay, I'll just see, clerks can pull those up.
Yes, and I've also circulated to all of council, so you have a higher quality view.
Thank you, and we'll just just waiting for the public view to come up here. I don't see them yet up on screen, so I'll just wait for the clerks to get those and then I'll start your timer.
It is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, and it should be coming up now.
I see it. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Boas.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and councillor. My name's Stephen Boas. I live in Grandview Woodland. I'm a renter in the R M four zone. I'm about nine blocks away. And I'm really concerned about the entire public planning process. On the cover slide, you actually see a photograph of the final Citizens Assembly Public Roundtable, and I was part of that. And I would just say, let's imagine we won back time and the rezoning planner said what she said to this crowd, how well it would have been taken. Just that as an exercise. Okay, next slide, please. So that's actually a photograph of a slide presented at the C A Roundtable showing the planning schedule. And the draft plan was supposed to come out in fall and winter. We heard nothing for eleven months until June of two thousand and sixteen. Next slide, slide three. I'm looking at the snapshot of the rezoning page from last night and I just noticed that there's a memo that was posted sometime during the day by Gail Kelly that's dated on February the fifth. And the memo will form a part of the February eleventh, twenty twenty one public hearing agenda package and be available for public viewing. It's a little bit late to post this, but I will address this memo because I think it's got a faulty line of reasoning about how this community plan, it's actually not in line with what the Citizens Assembly wanted. Next slide, please. This is a photograph of the Citizens Assembly. You can see a large number of people who worked on it. And I want to thank councillor Carr's leadership on this role to actually put a stop to the original emerging directions and then help form the Citizens Assembly. Next slide. We tried to get F O Is of draft plan updates when we saw that the information not being released by planning was done in secret until June of two thousand and sixteen and a month later in July, the Vision Majority passed this plan. There was a referral motion that was defeated and staff essentially went against key recommendations by the Citizens Assembly. And really, this is not a community plan. It's a staff plan imposed on Grandview Woodland. We might as well call it the Vision Vancouver Plan or the Andrew Pass Plan or whatever. Next slide, please. You can see, as Mr. King mentioned, I agree with everything he said, that there was no northwest residential apartment zone. You can see the draft in the C A final report and what came in two thousand and sixteen, right before it was rubber stamped by Vision. Next slide. In the Citizens Assembly final report, in this area of Grandview, it actually said in thirteen point twelve, "to maintain the neighbourhood character and preserve heritage assets, we recommend that the city keep the current zoning." So I don't know what part of the city keep the current zoning that planning did not understand when they made the community plan. Next slide, please. They have this trace document and the trace document actually is the planning department grading itself on how well it did the plan and they're now in no position to do that. And I'll just show you that in this section, thirteen point one two that I just quoted, they say that it was incorporated with modifications. Well, how is adding an apartment, northwest apartment zone incorporated with modifications, keeping the current zoning, it's not? So this trace document is not a accurate document to evaluate the plan and it should be done by someone else. And also, the four-story zone in other parts of the document on And also, the four-story zone, in other parts of the document on East Broadway and so on, like, the trace document is inaccurate. Next slide, and actually, what you need is a trace document, such as a community survey. This is actually a good trace document by, written by Jack King, two hundred and eighty-eight page book. Next slide. Uh, city's own policies spoke about seven, six stories. This is a blockbuster. Uh, next slide. Uh, city staff are saying that Grandview Woodland has grown by thirty people since the 2016 census, while we know that's certainly not true, because it grew by what, does eight hundred and seventy people in the last census cycle. Next slide. You can see twenty-seven, uh, new rental units on Victoria Drive that were completed, and I can just go on and on through the community. Next slide, some other options on Victoria Drive. Next slide. That's a scale of Francis Street, that, with a normal lens. Next slide. You can see a light art cloud, and that's actually the mapping model that I made of the proposal over the city's own lighter cloud. You can see how much bigger it is than what's there. Next slide, that's lighter cloud without, with the existing site. Next slide, lighter cloud and the mapping model.
Just fifteen seconds.
And that's, that's how big it is. So, um, yeah, next slide, you can see the context there. Next slide, you can see how big, uh, how many developments are coming online, and if we can just go back two slides.
We're just at the five minutes, but you do have a question from councillor Hardwick. So councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Boas. I'm struggling with this. I'm struggling with this. You know, we've heard so many positive things about this development and the need, need for it, and, and there is also, obviously, community support, certainly in the First Nations urban indigenous community. What I, I look at this, and I look at the, the Grandview Woodlands Assembly, Citizens Assembly, and I look at all this material, and I, it was only 2016, five years ago, when this passed. What happened in the last five years that would, in your view, that would so radically reshape this direction?
Just want to remind both councillor and speakers that we need to focus on this direct project, and I do realize that the process does lead up to that, so I'll kind of allow this, but please keep it contained to this particular project.
Thank you, it is relevant to this project, I appreciate it. Mr. Boas?
Okay, well, the, the plan, as Mr. King said, in, uh, planning policy, it's two-point-four FSR, it's six stories maximum, and this area wasn't even supposed to be upzoned per the CA, Citizens Assembly. And if planning say that, well, there's a section, seven point one three, here that lets you go, have a modest increase, and then they say that going from two-point-four FSR to four-point-zero-six is a modest increase, well, that's certainly not true. It's a major increase, going from six stories to nine stories, it's not a minor increase, it's like going to seven stories, but nine stories is a major increase. So it's not even following the policy that planning imposed on Grandview Woodland and what vision imposed on our community. So that, that's...
But you talked about vision, and they've been gone for several year, or a couple of years now anyway, so I'm really trying to get at what has happened in the intervening period, and, and what I thought I heard was that, you know, first of all, this, this was a staff-led initiative for this sub-zone, that it wasn't contained in the, in the discussion around, around the Grandview Woodlands community plan, that this was something that was added subsequently. But I'm, that's part of the, the answer, I think, but very specifically, I'm trying to understand what happened in the last five years in this specific area to warrant such an about-face in the policy.
Well, well, we have a couple of things. We've got personnel change, like Kent Monroe retired, and I think Mr. Monroe paid far more attention to what actual policy had to say.
Okay, I'm just gonna caution you there, we don't want to single out individual folks. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, so we want to focus on the building, and, you know, councillor hearings, councillor meetings are the places where we can talk about the wider policy or administration, but here, we want to focus on this.
Yeah, I asked very specifically about this.
Yeah, okay, I was just saying that there, there were some impacts, but here, if you allow this, then essentially, this is a blockbuster, and all of the affordable, some of the most affordable rental in all of Vancouver is right here. So this would open essentially the floodgates for demo evictions, for, for mass evictions, and people living in affordable housing to be just essentially shown the door, and any other property around this area can say, hey, we want an upzoning, this is supposed to fall under pace of change, it's not even mentioned in the document. Uh, so there are so many things that do not align with the policy that was imposed on, on this community, and people are just, just frustrated that anything they say, it doesn't matter, and planning, I, I'm just used to some, a different level of accountability in the, in the private sector.
So I think what I heard there was that there was staff turnover and loss of institutional memory perhaps in the last five years that was maybe a factor in this?
Well, yeah, and, and I heard what the mayor had to say, but I will point out that the rezoning planner did not work on the Grandview Woodland community plan, so there is a loss of institutional memory on, on this project, in, in terms of the overall context.
And finally, and I'm gonna run out of time, this is, is, is not a market rental or condo building, and so when you talk about blockbusting, it's not in, in terms of tenure, it's really in terms of height and massing.
Fifteen seconds.
Exactly, and the four FSR is, is just a precedent that on a side street like this in the most affordable rental area in Vancouver is, would just be a disaster.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks so much. We're on to our next speaker. Sorry, I'm just pulling my list up here. Uh, next speaker is John First.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Oh, wonderful. My name is John First. I am a resident of Grandview Woodland. I've lived here for twenty-five years now. Um, I am strongly in support of this project. You know, to answer councillor Hardwick, if I could, what has changed for me in the last five years is, is evident when I drive downtown or drive to Stanley Park, or I drive to the West Side, and that's what I see in Stretton Park. The, the need for social housing has always been great in this city, but it has become more and more evident in the last year. And this project does a wonderful job in bringing eighty-four units of social housing to the city. I actually find the building height and massing appropriate for Francis Street. We've seen a number of pictures and a number of descriptions of Francis Street. None of this have shown that one block away and across the street, there is now a twelve-story condo building, and that building has been there for a number of years. So this nine-story building actually fits very well into Francis Street. Furthermore, I, I give the architects great credit for taking those top three stories, moving them, it back from the front of the building, so that from many perspectives, those top three stories may not even be seen as you walk down the street. So I think that the, the excess of three stories that over the Grandview Woodland plan has been handled very sensitively and very well. Uh, Francis Street is also one of the wider streets in Grandview Woodland. I know on, on my street, which barely one car can go through, a building of this size wouldn't fit as well as it does fit on Francis Street. Lastly, let me just say that the building is, is quite pretty, and I think it would actually stand out in our neighborhood as a well-designed and a good-looking addition to the neighborhood. So I strongly support it, both for the social housing that it brings to the city, and for the look that it will give to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you so much. There are no questions for you, and just very much appreciate you phoning in this evening to share your thoughts. We're gonna move to the next speaker, who's Nathan Hawkins, speaker number seven. Nathan Hawkins?
Hello, good evening, council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Nathan. I was born in Vancouver, still live here, and I am a renter. I'm twenty-seven years old, and I expect to be renting for at least another decade, if not longer, and I am speaking strongly in support of this project. I think this sort of reasonable height, only nine-story density is exactly the kind of density that Vancouver should be adding. I think the exterior design is quite beautiful and will complement the neighborhood. I think the height makes perfect sense considering it's less than one block, it's, it's on the block right beside Commercial Drive, and I think this sort of density should be extending into the residential areas and not only be clustered along the main commercial streets, because that makes these areas much more walkable, much more safer for bikers. And the last point I wanted to make is, I'm kind of disappointed by the other feedback that I've been hearing from other people who called in, saying that, oh, this project could be okay if it was only six stories high, is in effect saying, oh, this is okay if we have, you know, sixty more people in the neighborhood, but eighty-four, that, that's too many. You know, one-third of these people can't live here, one-third of these people have to live somewhere else. And I want to point out how exclusionary that is. It, it's just not fair. It, it's not a dignified way to treat other people. There's so many people across BC, across the city, across the country, that want to come live in this fantastic city, Vancouver, and I think we should be making more space for them. If that means adding six more stories to a building, let's do it. If it means adding twenty more stories, let's do it. But it, it just doesn't make sense to me why people are so stuck up on the difference between six stories versus nine stories. And I also want to say that building three more stories, allowing twenty-four more people to live in this building, means you can bring down the cost of housing for each of those units, say maybe a hundred dollars a month. Well, a hundred dollars a month may not seem like a lot to a landowner who's been living in the area for thirty years, but a hundred dollars a month to somebody who, you know, is working paycheck to paycheck, that's huge. And so I think we should be taking any action we can do to allow them to live in any community in Vancouver and live in a dignified way. Thank you for letting me speak, I yield my time.
Thank you for your comments. I'm just checking here, I don't see any questions for you, so we're gonna move on to the next speaker. Councillor, next speaker is Thaddeus McElroy, speaker number eight.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please.
Okay, great. Hi there, my name's Thaddeus McElroy, I am a Vancouver resident. I'm opposed to this development, I'm speaking on my own path. I do thank you for affording me an opportunity to share these remarks with you. I think you folks are all very brave to spend your Thursday evening with these kinds of things, which is no doubt your job, but my goodness, it is quite a process. My theme for my brief remarks will be strictly on the notion of what are the alternatives to the height? From my point of view, is there any doubt within Vancouver, the indigenous community, that there is a need for additional housing? No, there is no doubt whatsoever. Is there any doubt that this project has been carefully planned and designed, thought through in so many ways? No doubt. I, I'm so impressed by the planning documents and all of the issues that are discussed within those. Does the design look like anything other than gorgeous? It's a model design, absolutely. I would love to see this building built, but of course, the concern comes back to the neighborhood. I've been renting in a rent-controlled apartment at eighteen sixteen Francis Street, which is a short block away from the proposed development. I've been here for over a decade. This year, I turned sixty-five years old. I love living in East Vancouver, I can honestly say it's the finest place, the best place I've ever lived, and that encompasses four cities in three different countries. I think the neighborhood is a rare treasure. I wonder, for the folks that are here tonight on council, how many of you have recently visited our neighborhood? Of course, you're familiar with it, of course, you've been around here in the past, but if you walked around this neighborhood recently and just tried to sort of inhale the, the magic of what is this sort of low, you know, low pretense, just sort of everyday kind of place that is this section of East Vancouver, you know, there's nothing to it other than people living here, participating in the community, being connected to Commercial Drive. It's something really extraordinary. I think it's, it's, it, it's just a special place in which this building is proposed to be situated. I've had the good fortune of corresponding with David Eddy at the Vancouver Native Housing Society, and we've never met, but I think he's an amazing guy. The questions that I put to him regarding this proposal were answered deliberately, forthrightly, extensively. I, I was absolutely impressed with his response, and he ensures me that from the perspective of the Vancouver Native Housing Society, there are no alternatives to the Francis Street site. And so I do understand that from the perspective of the society, they could perceive no alternatives. My question is then, stepping beyond that, stepping out to the city, working with Vancouver Native Housing Society, knowing that there are these concerns, are there alternatives that could be explored? I certainly hope so, and I put it to council that it's worth postponing this application until these issues have been explored more broadly beyond simply the Vancouver Native Housing Society. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments today, and I don't see any questions for you, so we'll be moving on to the next speaker, who's Lillian Chow.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. Can you hear me okay?
Sure can, and you have up to five minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Lillian Chow, and I'm the Director of Community Real Estate with Brightside Community Homes Foundation. I am also a resident of the Hastings Sunrise neighborhood, and I'm pleased to be speaking in support of Vancouver Native Housing Society's project this evening. Brightside is a fellow charitable nonprofit housing provider. We are acutely aware of how challenging it can be to build affordable housing in the city. So I really applaud this project and Van Native for aiming to achieve the highest standards of environmental sustainability. I applaud this project for providing a significant number of family housing and much-needed childcare spaces for East Vancouver households. In addition, the design of the spaces and uses have prioritized indigenous households to ensure they are culturally appropriate and reflect their needs. Once built, this project will be an example of what an inclusive, well-designed, thoughtful, and indigenous-led, innovative, affordable housing development could look like. As an urban planner, I am encouraged to see new rental development that encourages and enables less car usage and a more sustainable future. In our experience at Brightside, social housing residents often have minimal vehicle usage, especially when they are living next to a rapid transit corridor, a well-used bike route, and have access to multiple car-share options. The proposed form and height, which has been spoken about quite a bit earlier this evening, and I agree with the previous speaker that it is entirely appropriate for what is needed for the future of our community and the city. Affordable housing requires additional density to be realized, and every unit and every floor area is essential to make the project work and keep rents low. Given that affordable rental housing is specifically lacking for urban Aboriginal households, an additional three stories with an appropriate setback to accommodate additional families is not only appropriate, but essential. I also want to remind council that, and make this point, that the decisions that you make tonight isn't about what exists today, or what buildings will continue to exist in the next two or five years. We should be planning for the next sixty to a hundred years and the multiple generations of families that will live in Grandview Woodland. And your decisions tonight need to consider the people that aren't currently living here, the voices that you're not hearing tonight because they're not here yet. We know that maintaining the status quo isn't creating the housing we need and the housing people can afford. Lastly, I want to speak as a resident and a neighbor. We live in Hastings Sunrise, within a short bike ride, and my husband grew up on Adenac Street in Grandview Woodland, which is a short walk to this project. His family still lives in the same house, and pre-COVID times, we would be there with our children... our children on a regular basis. I'm proud that this beautiful project will be built in my community and neighbourhood. So behalf of my family, I want to express that we are looking forward to welcoming back all the Indigenous families that were displaced by the fire and all the new families that will grow roots and make this wonderfully diverse community that we call home. Vancouver Native Housing Society's 1766 Francis Street is an opportunity to envision a better future, one that our children can afford to live in and one that is more inclusive and equitable for Indigenous families. We ask mayor and council to support and approve this important project. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. There are no questions for you, so I'm going to move to the next speaker, who I have Deborah Cook. It's Deborah Cook here. Speaker number 10.
Yes, Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here, and we are advised that Deborah Cook is not on the line.
Okay, thanks so much. I'm going to move to speaker 11, Jill Atkey.
Hi there, mayor and council, can you hear me?
Sure can. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Jill Atkey, and I'm speaking in support of the 1766 Francis Street proposal. Unlike when I've seen in front of you previously, I'm here wearing a couple of hats this evening. So as you know, I represent BC Nonprofit Housing Association, which is the umbrella agency for nonprofit housing providers throughout BC. Our offices are at First and Commercial in the heart of Grandview Woodland, and I also live at the intersection of Grandview Woodland, Hastings Sunrise, and Renfrew Heights. I know the community where this proposed project sits very well. I spend lots and lots of time in that area, and I look forward to welcoming current and future neighbours into the community. So I'll just start with a bit of background that I think will help explain the importance of this project in Grandview Woodland. As Dave Eddy referenced, the community is home to approximately 20% of Vancouver's urban Indigenous population, and it's a population that is young and growing. One in five of the 2,200 Indigenous residents in Vancouver Woodland is under the age of 14 years old. Five years ago, Metro Vancouver's Aboriginal Executive Council developed an affordable housing plan and set a target of a minimum of 1,500 new culturally-appropriate and affordable homes for Indigenous peoples in the region. To date, we have not seen anywhere close to these numbers of developments move forward, and in light of the continued housing insecurity in our community as a whole, but in particular in the Indigenous community, it is important to not lose sight of these targets when considering new developments. And I'd say that's why these 84 homes are so important. With 32 of the units being two, three, and four bedrooms, the development fills a clear gap in family-sized units in the neighbourhood and in the city. And to know that they will all be rent-geared-to-income units makes this a pretty rare project these days. Finally, the fact that there is childcare on-site makes this an affordable housing dream project. I would estimate, and I don't have exact numbers, but I estimate that less than 5% of affordable family housing in BC has any form of on-site childcare. And it's really not easy to align these two funding programmes, which speaks to the commitment of Vancouver Native Housing Society to get this project right for the people who will ultimately call it home and to make sure that they have the right support. As a higher-income parent with lots of privilege, I've had to scramble for childcare, and it's not easy, and that's when you can pay for it. And sometimes, and lots and lots of parents have been in this situation as well, you put your children in situations that you don't feel 100% secure about, and that's what makes the affordable housing, or rather, the childcare component of this affordable housing development really, really critical. So in conclusion, I guess I would agree with the previous speaker who referred to this neighbourhood as magical. I honestly think that it is magical, and I do honestly think that the proposed project would add to that magic, not subtract from it. Thank you.
Thanks so much. There's no questions for you from council, so just want to thank you so much for calling in and all the work you do for the city. Thank you. Oh, councillor Weep.
Great, thank you.
I do have a question for councillor Weep. Go ahead, councillor Weep.
Yeah, we've heard from a couple of speakers today that this could lead to a lot of other projects in the neighbourhood trying to get the same density and height. And I'm wondering, you talked about how you rarely see a project be able to deliver this affordability as well as childcare. Can you talk about kind of how hard it would be for other providers to be able to deliver this type of project?
Yeah, I mean, it's not a question of being able to go back to the drawing board. So we hear a lot of that at public hearings, that this is a good project, it's just in the wrong place, or it's at the wrong height. Going back to the drawing board is not always possible. So Vancouver Native Housing Society has a piece of land, they've got funding to do a development. The formula works because of the density, and going back to the drawing board isn't always an option simply because nonprofits run very, very tight margins, and a lot of money is invested into bringing a proposal forward, and it exhausts the society to bring a project forward that doesn't go ahead, and we've seen that happen in other areas of the region. And going back to the drawing board is very, very expensive and time-consuming. And the fact that these are all RGI units makes it fairly rare. As you know, as a council, nonprofit projects that come forward to you are mixed income, typically the new projects are mixed income in the sense that they may have some deeply targeted units, but they go all the way up to low end of market. In and of itself, it's not a bad thing, but you need many, many of those projects to reach our truly, our targets for truly affordable units that we all hope to achieve and that we know there's a need for in the city.
So you think even though there's a lot of comments about this not fitting in with the neighbourhood, that this is such a unique project that council should be sure supportive of the project?
Yeah, absolutely. And the fact that it's 100% RGI and there are before and after-school childcare spaces, those spaces are precious in this neighbourhood, very, very difficult to come by. And so that combination means that people have those childcare supports built into their housing, and it just eases life in an unbelievable way. And we very, very rarely see projects with that combination.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for questions. Appreciate you calling in today.
Great, thanks so much.
Thanks. We're on to the next speaker. Sorry, just pulling up my list here. We have Margaret Boudreaux.
Yes, I'm here.
Hi there. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Good evening, Mayor Stewart and city council members. Firstly, I would like to acknowledge that we are living on the unceded territory and lands of the Musqueam, Flaywaytooth, and Squamish nations. I'd like to allow, I would like to thank them for allowing us to speak on their territories. My name is Margaret Boudreaux, and I am an elder and one of the matriarchs of the Gitzan Nation up in the Hazelton area of BC. I am in support of the 1766 Street rezoning development project proposal. I was a resident prior to the fire at Francis Street back in 2017, December 20th to be exact. We were emergency housed at the 2,400 motel, where we stayed for a period of four weeks before we were found appropriate housing, and we were quite fortunate to be rehoused at Chelsea Court at Grandview and Nanaimo. While we were there, Vancouver Native Housing, thank you very much, Vancouver Native Housing, provided all of our needs, our lodgings. They provided gift cards for Safeway and other stores, and we also had a New Beginnings Church provide us with multiple hundreds of dollars of Visa cards for groceries and our needs for supplies and essentials. So I want to thank all those people. The neighbourhood was very, very kind and helpful, as one of the ladies spoke that she was next door to our building, that yes, the people in the neighbourhood supplied blankets, coffee, even supplied lodgings for some of the displaced people, and also came to the rescue with all our animals that were, you know, trapped in the building until the firemen could get them out. So we're very, I miss the neighbourhood very much. I really hope to come back to 1766 Francis, and I'm very impressed with the draft that I've managed to get a copy online. I'm very proud that this building is, hopefully will be approved by city council, so that we as First Nations people of BC have a decent place to call home. It is so beautiful, I'm so impressed, you know, with the floor plans, the Indigenous motifs, and you name it. Our people deserve this kind of living, and I love the neighbourhood. I really miss the neighbourhood. It was close to schools, shopping areas. We had an affordable, no frills just down the street, and Commercial Drive, of course, is a very, you know, it's a very friendly, compatible area to live in, and I am so pleased that this building is in, hopefully in the makings. I just pray that this will be, come to fruition. And yes, and I believe that our people will enhance the community just by, you know, sharing our culture, our traditions, our ceremonies, and I'm also impressed with the before and after-school daycare, which is really much needed in our Indigenous community. Right now, people are doubling up in homes, and I would like to see a grandparent approach to the housing. In my culture up north, and still it goes on, grandparents still live in the home, they're not farmed out, they're not, we don't have the fancy nursing homes that we do here in Vancouver. So it's always been embedded in our culture and taught to us that we're to care and look after our, the people that looked after us are our parents, our grandparents. And I would very much like to see this type of program promoted into this new development. So that's what I have to say, and again, I really thank you for listening to me, and it's such a long night, and I hope you don't have too much more to go on this, and I just hope that this proposal is approved. Thank you very much again.
Thank you so much for participating today, and there are no questions for you, so I am going to move on to the next speaker. Thanks again so much. We have Alexandra Christian.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Alexandra Christian. I'm the Operations Manager with the Aboriginal Housing Management Association, AMA. I'd like to first acknowledge the land that we are meeting on, the unceded and traditional territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Flaywaytooth nations. On behalf of the Aboriginal Housing Management Association, I'm here this evening to support the Vancouver Native Housing Society proposal to redevelop and expand their affordable housing at 1766 Francis Street. The AMA consists of 41 member Indigenous housing and service providers, including the Vancouver Native Housing Society. They advocate and lead Indigenous housing change through culturally-appropriate housing services to meet our Indigenous communities' unique needs. As the Canada's first Indigenous housing authority, the AMA was created for Indigenous people by Indigenous people. In addition to providing families with affordable and culturally-appropriate housing, AMA's members, including the DNHS, offer many support services through 35 different programs, including homelessness prevention, transition homes, parenting skills, mental health programs, substance abuse support, and more. Vancouver Native Housing Society currently provides and manages approximately 900 affordable rental housing units in Vancouver and has a proven reputation for supporting the urban Indigenous community and leader, oh, excuse me, and their leaders in affordable housing in the Lower Mainland. Over the last 36 years, they have consistently fulfilled their mandate to provide safe, secure, affordable housing through the various buildings they own and operate through a wide range of innovative operation models. This development is the ideal project to permit a modest increase in height and density allowance. This 84-unit social housing passive house certified complex for the urban Indigenous families and singles represents a significant opportunity to boost Vancouver's increasingly scarce affordable rental housing supply. It contributes to the city's climate targets while also meeting the needs of the city's growing urban Indigenous population. I do not doubt that this decision will support the development's viability. It will benefit the community by enabling Vancouver Native Housing Society to deliver affordable, sustainable, and culturally-appropriate housing for urban Indigenous people once again at Francis Street. They will bring their passion for community care and empower Indigenous people and their housing management experience to the project and ensure it meets the community's specific needs and the neighbourhood's context. This redevelopment will replace lost homes for former tenants and expand opportunities for more Indigenous families to benefit from affordable rental housing. AMA is very much in support of the long-awaited rezoning and redevelopment of Vancouver Native Housing's Francis Street site to renew and enhance the affordable housing stock owned by this impactful and well-respected society in Vancouver's Grandview Woodland neighbourhood. The Vancouver Native Housing Society's proposed plan will replace the existing damaged building with a new.
Thank you so much.
I, oh, sorry. Oh, sorry, I got, there was an interruption in my phone, I apologize.
That's okay. Please keep going.
AMA is, yeah, AMA is very much in support of the long-awaited rezoning and development of Vancouver's Francis Street site to renew and enhance the affordable housing stock owned by this impactful and well-respected society in Vancouver's woodland area. I'm not quite sure if that part of my, you could hear me well, but.
Yes, we could hear you all the way through.
Okay, very good. The energy-efficient passive house construction consists of 32 family units containing two, three, and four-bedroom apartments, an Indigenous-focused before-and-after-school care programme on the ground floor, with 100% of the units to be rented at rate of low to moderate tenant incomes. This redevelopment will help fill a significant and growing need for affordable rental housing for urban Indigenous people who continue to bear the brunt of this city's affordable housing crisis.
Thanks so much.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the project.
Thank you. And I don't see any questions for you, so we're going to move to the next speaker. But thank you again for sharing your thoughts. I'm going to move to, where are we now? We're speaker, we're speaker 15, Zoe Luba.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Hi, so I want to start by acknowledging that I'm speaking. Hi, so I want to start by acknowledging that I'm speaking on the unceded territories of the Squamish, Musqueam, and Slavettut Nations that are still being held under what is an ongoing colonial occupation by the Canadian state and the city of Vancouver. Secondly, I want to make clear, I'm speaking in support of this project. I'm really excited about it, for sure. I don't live on Francis Street, but I spent a lot of time on Francis Street, especially before COVID. One of my best friends in the whole city lives a few doors down from where this development will be, and they are hugely in support. They wrote into council. Another two of my friends, three of my friends live across the street in another building, and they're also all hugely in support. We're all, we're all young renters, and we're really excited to see a project like this being proposed. I spent some time looking through the proposal, and I was really pleasantly surprised that it's social housing, not the pathologizing surveillance supportive housing that is popping up as kind of the only option for poor people in the city these days. And the surveillance especially hits Black and Indigenous and people of color hearts. So I was really, really excited to see that this is social housing, not supportive housing. So people are going to have autonomy and be able to live in a way that feels good for them. And all of the cultural support, the sweat lodge, the fact that it's for all Indigenous people, like, all of that, childcare, it's just really, really great, great to see. And so, so badly needed. Like, we don't need market housing shoved in with social housing, the fact that it's all social housing at rent geared to income, housing income limits, all of that. I mean, ideally, I think housing should be free for everyone, and I don't personally believe in the idea of private property, but this is at least something that I am still in, in support of, and I'm happy to see it being put forward. So thanks to everyone who's put in work to make this happen. I just wanted to finish up by flagging that these, as I'm listening the whole time, and normally I can't stomach listening to the NIMBY debates for too long, but I did listen in because I didn't want to miss my turn to speak because it is so important, and I really want to speak in support. But this debate about, you know, six versus four versus nine, like, the fact that you're wanting to put an all-Indigenous social housing project back to the drawing board just because your view is going to be impacted? And if you're saying that as a settler, like, I, that is just, in my opinion, a form of ongoing colonialism, that you feel like you have the right to sit, to call into a meeting and push, and push back a project with all Indigenous land, not your land, and say, no, I want it to be four stories. It was just, just very disappointing, not surprising, but very disappointing to hear. It's just, in my opinion, those kinds of sentiments, those common sentiments of how colonialism continues to function in a city that prides itself on being quote-unquote "a progressive place," when like, it's not. It's white supremacist, it's colonial, like, urban Indigenous people are often pushed out and face really, really intense police violence and murders. Anyways, that being, all that being said, this project is badly needed and hugely exciting, and I am, I'm in full, in full support.
Thank you. You do have a question from Counsel Weep. Counsel Weep, go ahead, up to two minutes, sorry, five minutes. Okay, thank you, Counsel Weep. So thanks, that's it, there are no questions for you. Just wanted to thank you for calling in, and I'm going to move to the next speaker. We have Virag Visi. Okay. I understand that Virag Visi is not on the line, so we're going to move to Stuart Smith.
Hello?
Hi there, thanks for calling in tonight, up to five minutes.
Thanks very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Stuart Smith, and I'm speaking in support. Just a few quick words. First off, the previous speaker mentioned land acknowledgement, and I have some ideas about this dozens of times a day, year in, year out, for as long as I can remember. Public speakers in Vancouver recite a land acknowledgement at meetings and events, big and small. When I heard that the first time, I was moved. I found it a powerful way of reminding people like myself how we ended up here. But when I heard it the 100th time and the 200th time, I started to worry. And did it really mean anything? Or was it just a ritual, a way of making, preserving the status quo seem progressive? I haven't found an answer to that yet, but hearings like these, however imperfect, are a powerful way we can demonstrate whether we mean it or not. This land belonged to First Nations 163 years ago. If we are serious when we say that we are, that we are here on sole land, then what place does the city of Vancouver or any of us have to say whether this building should be three stories, nine stories, or 90 stories? It's regrettable that we have to have these sort of hearings, but in this case, it seems pretty clear. Indigenous people own this land, and they'd like to do nine stories, so let's work with them to make sure that the pipes hook up and the electricity works, and let's let them build their building. I'd also like to reiterate some comments another speaker mentioned. The speaker was opposed, but mentioned that everyone wants to belong, and everyone deserves a safe and secure home, and that we are all the community. Everyone wants to belong, everyone deserves a safe and secure home, we are all the community. Does everyone belong? What if everyone doesn't fit in three stories or four stories? What do we do then? If everyone doesn't fit in three stories or four stories, who decides which part of everyone is the community and which part has to leave? If everyone doesn't fit, who profits by raising their rents or raising their prices to take advantage of this? If we're truly all the community, then all housing is good housing. If we are truly all the community, then the only thing that matters is avoiding displacement and eviction, everything else is just aesthetics and classism. This is a nine-story building full of housing that people are going to love living in, and every person who gets to live here is someone who won't have to either squeeze in somewhere else, or live further away, or compete for my sleep. So let's build lots of housing, let's build it in Grandview Woodlands. Contrary to our previous speaker, Grandview Woodlands' population is not growing, and stagnant for 20 years, let's change that. So I urge you to please approve this building, thank you very much.
Thank you for calling in, and don't have any questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. We have Owen Brady, Speaker number 18.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Sure can, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. I live two short blocks south of the project. I will be able to see it from my balcony if and when it's built. I'm strongly in support of the proposal. I think it'll be the best-looking structure in the neighborhood, actually, and I'm quite excited to see it go up. Given the local context, I actually think this building is a little too short, and we're missing an opportunity to build more below-market housing at 12 stories. With the massive setbacks above the sixth floor, additional stories wouldn't have much impact on anything. There's also a 12-story building on my block to the north, closer to the project, and a 12-story building one block up Francis Street, too, from the project. These small towers were built decades ago and fit in just fine. It doesn't seem that any blockbusting has succumbed to pass. What I do see popping up all around here lately is townhouses that cost north of one and a quarter million dollars. Now, while this proposal as social housing is allowed under the Grandview Woodlands plan, I think we also need to realize that the plan is inadequate, outdated, and not really working. Some housing above four stories is getting built nearby on Hastings, the busiest, most polluted arterial in the area, such as across from a slaughterhouse and near a rendering plant. This is not equitable. Meanwhile, off of arterials, in the very few places where six-story rental is nominally allowed under the plan to seek a rezoning, we are seeing the aforementioned townhouses instead. Prices are up since 2016, rents are up a lot since 2016. We need to adjust for that and recognize that it's not fair and not working, and additional relaxations and a more straightforward and certain process is required going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for phoning in. I'm just checking here, but I don't see any questions for you. So that's it for today, and again, thanks. Counsel, that is the last of our, oh, thank you. Thank you. That's the last of our registered speakers for this item. Now I'm going to call three times for additional speakers. The number is 1-833-353-8610, code 78622, pound, to get on the list. I'm just going to check with the clerks if there's anybody else on the line.
No one on the line, Mayor Stewart.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to make the call again, the number 1-833-353-8610. And that number is available on Twitter and available on livestream. And check with the clerk, anybody phoned in?
Just getting a message. Someone has just joined, if you could just hold for a moment, please.
Great, thanks.
Sorry, Mayor Stewart, we are just sorting out who the individual is.
Okay, no problem.
And if they wish to speak.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here, that individual was not joining for this item.
Okay, great, thanks so much. So that's the second call, I will make a third call now. The number is on the livestream and Twitter. Oh, right, and now we're going to take a five-minute break while we wait, give people ample time to call in, so it is 8:02, let's come back at 8:07. Thanks, and we'll see you in five, Council. Anybody else on the list to speak?
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here, and yes, we do have one individual that has joined, Larry Bench.
Great, okay. Hello, are you there? Hello, Speaker, are you there?
Mayor Stewart, it's the clerk here, I'm just double-checking to make sure our lines are all unmuted, he is on the line.
Okay, thank you. We can hear you, Speaker, if you want to go ahead.
Here, and yes, we do have one individual that has joined, Larry Bench.
Great, okay.
Hello?
Hi there, I'm hearing an echo, if you could maybe turn off your computer in the background?
Oh, wait a second, I'm probably on, how's that? Is that better?
Sounds a little better, yep, thanks. If you want to go ahead, up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Okay, and I'll turn off my computer sound, too, so that should kill everything. All right, I'm Larry Bench, Coalition of Vancouver Neighborhoods. We are, I'm speaking in opposition to this development. We've heard a lot of different things tonight from the people, some of the people who live in the neighborhood, they talk about context, they talk about height, they talk about massing. This is some of our concerns, it's 50% over the allowable height of the Grandview Woodland Community Plan. The building, massing is about a 70% increase over the FSR that's allowed in the community plan, and the question always. And the question always arises at a point like this. What's the value of community planning if you're gonna override it continuously in various spot rezonings across the city, but this one in particular at this time? Also, context. The neighborhood is two to four stories. The neighborhood has already, in the GWAC Community Plan, supported six-story buildings. So you have to wonder whether a large part of what is in this development couldn't be accomplished within a six-story envelope. Also, some questions arise when I went through the report. The report states thirty-two percent of the moderately income, moderately affordable units. And the balance, my understanding when I read the report was that the balance would be market rentals. But I have heard since tonight that they are rent geared to income, which is quite different from what the report says. Is that locked into the report itself? That's a question. Another one is the childcare, which is a good idea for a development like this. But that is suggested in the policy program, in the application, whatever. But it's not locked in. People have asked about the effect on neighboring existing housing. Mike Weave asked about its effect on other developments like this. Well, you know, non-market housing developments like this may not be affected in this area. But certainly the surrounding market, the potential for market housing, market rental, will be affected on all of the older two- and three-story and four-story apartment blocks in this area. It'll increase the value of the land, and there'll be more pressure on them to be removed. So the loss of more affordable housing. I don't think it's... I think if you had neighborhood-based planning processes in this thing, you would have, I think it would preclude the necessity of people coming to public hearings and giving additional time to these kinds of things. And I think there, in terms of options for this site or options for this type of development. The owner developer has said that they own other sites. There's a possibility of density transfers to other sites so that those sites can be developed a little bit further. I think the sixteen eighty East Hastings site has a lot of potential. I think it's a larger site. I think it can accomplish everything on this site, since it has been already promised to an indigenous group. The possibility exists that you put a six-story on this site and you, between the two sites, you accomplish more than you originally expected to get out of these things. So there's a lot of potential. The idea that the neighborhood, as many neighborhoods are, you know, talked about, that we don't want renters in our neighborhood because if you reduce this from nine stories to six stories, you're effectively telling people to get lost, go somewhere else. That's totally, I think it's unreasonable to make assumptions and accusations like that because there are many people in this night of eighteen speakers have already said that there are tons of additional indigenous people living all around them. They, you know, people get along in Grandview Woodland. And there's already a lot of this type of housing, and there's certainly a potential for more. So, you know, I think it's, again, this adversarial business, yeah. And I think it's, people have to look for solutions, not additional problems.
Thanks. A couple of questions. The first one from me. Just wondering your thoughts about reconciliation. I mean, that has been a part of this. This is a building that is replacing indigenous housing that burned to the ground tragically. And just wondering if your thoughts about how this would help us reach our goals of being a city of reconciliation?
Just a second. I gotta turn off this timer. Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. My thoughts on reconciliation. Well, do you want me to write a book? I mean, that's a huge, that's a huge question, Mayor.
No, just as related to this project.
Okay, and as related to this project, I think the project itself works well towards reconciliation in the various issues that are raised within that sort of large, broad issue. I think a lot of the work that it would do towards reconciliation can be easily accommodated in a six-story as well as a nine-story building because the issues that have to be settled out in the very complex issue that is reconciliation can be worked out in various ways, in various sizes of developments and types of developments. All of the issues to have to do with reconciliation can in no way be worked out in one building or a dozen buildings. So the thought that this can solve all the problems would be a false one. It can certainly lend itself to, you know, solving some of the issues in terms of housing and things like that. There are other sites and the other holdings of this particular owner developer are already helping in that way. So I think that's my answer.
But still opposed?
Yes, because I'm not against the development. I'm not against reconciliation. I think that the development needs to be smaller in order to contextually fit in with the neighborhood. It's already, the neighborhood, all of the neighborhood has already, through the Citizens Assembly, which was put together by a computer program out of Toronto to get the absolute most balanced group that you could ever hope to get, has decided through their five years of work, as an earlier person, a speaker, said, has reached certain goals and aspirations and put together some policies towards the various areas in the city. And one of those areas was this particular one. And in this particular one, they decided, the totality of the citizens of Grandview Woodlands, to have six-story buildings. And now this project comes along and attempts to get a, like a fifty percent increase in the height and a seventy percent increase in the floor space ratio. So I'm thinking that there are a lot of sites within the city to develop, not even just in Grandview Woodlands, but in other places, other neighborhoods that can help to accommodate the needs of indigenous people as well as low-income people and all the different classes and types and vintages of people that we have in the city of Vancouver.
Thanks so much. You have a question from councillor Hardwick.
Good evening, Mr. Benge.
Good evening.
In listening to all of this, I've been weighing it back and forth. But one of the things that was mentioned by this member of the staff early on was that this height and density was required for project viability. And that really stuck with me because, as you've been saying and others have said, why not stick to the six stories? And the inference from that is that it's, they can't make the numbers work. Now, if I had heard that for a strata condo project, my reaction would have been very different. It would have been, you know, so what, you're not gonna get the same profitability? But this is a nonprofit. So how do you see balancing the project viability with a nonprofit? And how do you balance that against the additional height and density requests?
Well, first of all, the project is getting a waiver of CACs and DCLs, which is a bonus to them. As I said, and I don't know if you can answer, anybody else, or I'm allowed to ask a question, but the report doesn't mention rent geared to income anywhere that I read. I may be missing something, but it doesn't, and I don't, I'm not casting aspersions on anybody who presented earlier and said that. I'm really, I was surprised to hear that and pleased to hear that because there are so little and few developments in the city that are actually addressing that portion of the population. To give them a decent place to live is a good thing. But to your question, I think things like density transfers, you know, we, I don't think we use that enough, especially with a owner developer that has multiple sites and multiple, you know, holdings. There is certainly probably a possibility there. I'm, you know, quite frankly, I'm very, very surprised on this particular project that Jack King, in a two-week time span, very quickly, found a site on East Hastings that is just crying out to be used for something like this and probably eventually will be because of the limits on the use of that land as part of a donation to the city by Petrican. But like, why didn't the city look around and look at that site? See that that is, it was promised to the young natives, what's the name? The Urban Native Youth Association? And that gave, you know, that gives the possibility of, like I said, accomplishing probably even more goals on that site than on this one. And the two combined would be a wonderful kind of, you know, dual project there, you know? It has the, it has the possibilities at least. But, you know, as I'm seeing from other projects, which I'll talk about later, the city seems not so open to possibilities and more pursuing hard-edged goals of their policies.
Are you concerned, even though this is a nonprofit housing project, that it would be used as precedent in Grandview Woodlands where there has been, you know, as established earlier, a lot of work done around the community plan? Are you concerned that this be used as a precedent in market units as opposed to other social housing developments?
Absolutely. Yes, it's a building size. It's a building typology. Developers will come in and say, look, you got a nine-story there. You know, why can't I get nine? Why can't I get ten? And, you know, with the way spot rezonings are going in the city right now and everything's being approved, you know, you can throw Van Plan out the window. And likewise, apparently, the planning department is not paying much attention to the GWAC plan, which is developed, once again, as I said, over five years of work with all the citizens and everything. You couldn't get a more equitable distribution of people on an assembly of citizenry.
Thanks. That's the five minutes?
Thank you.
That's it for, oh, we have councillor Weave up to five minutes.
Yeah, looking at the floor plate on this, do you think that the proponent should have focused on going six stories and maximizing the floor plate instead of the buffer plantings, cultural area, and ability to have the playground? Because recognizing you could fit a lot more density on the site at six stories. However, I feel like there's a good balance here in creativity to ensure that there is good balancing and buffer use of community space as well as sunlight. So I'm just wondering what you think that balances and that use of creativity?
I think that, I agree with you. I like the amenities to the building, the brief look that I've had at it. And I think it, you know, I think that, I don't think you should lose that stuff. But if you're asking me, would I take six stories without that stuff versus nine stories with that stuff? Quite frankly, that is not my call. The massing and the height of the building are the problem. It's not the creativity of the architects and designers and even the owners to a degree, probably in consultation, that have created those things. And they feel that that is an absolute need of the people who are going to live there, and it makes it a lot more livable. So it's very, very difficult to, you know, take those things away, which create more livability and better livability, you know? So that's a, that's a, it's a very good question. It's a very, it's a very good balancing act. And it's a difficult one to answer, so I guess I'm dodging it.
No, I appreciate it. Thanks for coming today.
Okay, you're welcome.
I think that's it for questions. I'm just pulling my screen up here. One second. Yep, that's it. Thanks so much for your time. Clerks, I believe we have other folks on the line? Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Stewart, we have speaker number twenty now, Kristin Bevan-Latander.
Okay, thanks.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Could you just, again, for the record, just state your name and whether or not you're a resident of Vancouver?
Absolutely. My name is Kristin Bevan-Latander. I am a resident of Vancouver. And as a matter of fact, I grew up half a block from where the proposed site is, on the corner of Francis and Salisbury. But I am coming today as a representative of the D.C. Aboriginal Childcare Society, who is the proposed childcare operator for this project. We did submit a written submission for comments, and I wasn't feeling confident about speaking, but it's been such an interesting dialogue this evening that I felt that it was important for us to join the conversation and speak to all of the different, or as many of the different points as we could. I wanted to really thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and acknowledge that I live on the lands of the Musqueam, Tsaytsetoos, and Musque... Sorry, and Squamish First Nations. And I'm coming specifically from Musqueam First Nations this evening. I really wanted to have an opportunity to talk to you about the pleasure, the absolute pleasure of working with the Vancouver Native Housing Society on this project. I know that they spoke earlier about the amount of accommodations that they made to some of our suggestions around the childcare space. And that couldn't be more than true. They listened to every single recommendation that we made and worked really diligently to make accommodations, to make the best possible space for childcare in that site. And really have done such a lot to considerately think about how it could work in the context of this project. I wanted to mention that, we all know that there's a critical lack of childcare in the city and in the province. But I would like to tell you, if you don't already know, that if you're talking about indigenous childcare, there is an even more substantive gap, and particularly in Vancouver. Our agency runs two of, only four indigenous-run childcare programs in the city. And one of those childcare programs is on reserve, and so is not open to people outside of that specific nation. And so, and to my knowledge, there's not another indigenous after-school care program, indigenous-run after-school care program in the whole city of Vancouver. So this is a very critical project as far as including this childcare program within the context of the community. I know that lots of folks that are speaking in opposition of the project have asked, why here? Why not somewhere else? And I think that's a common challenge when we're looking at, you know, things that sort of stretch outside what we hope for in our community. And I think that it goes back to reconciliation. I know one of the other councillors asked what's changed in the last five years. And I can tell you that, as someone who's working in an indigenous agency, that I think that the path to reconciliation has been significantly changed over the last five years. And that Vancouver has really committed themselves to being a city of reconciliation. And this is a huge opportunity to put that commitment... um to the test. And I think that um you know, previous, numbers of previous speakers have talked about, this land is not necessarily our land. This land belongs to the original nations um of this land and this is our opportunity to give back. Um so I I understand that there's always stress about it. Um but I think that the previous councillor really spoke well to, you know, there is um been a a huge attention to detail to accommodate for using less of the space to arrive for um accommodate for a setback and a setback in the last three um uh floors of the space so that it doesn't have that overwhelming space. And I think the trade-off between nine stories and six stories, um you know, it would be a much more dense footprint on that on that site. Um I just wanted to thank you all for allowing me to speak and um I really appreciate all of the work that's gone into this. Um oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to say one last thing about lots of people have mentioned the East Hastings site, um you know, as another alternative. If you give up three stories on this site in hopes to get more stories on the other side, why could you not think about having more stories on both sites and offer more child but more housing spaces in both sites rather than less on one, thinking that you're gonna get more on the other? And we also run a council...
You're at your five, but but you do have a question from councillor Frye. Councillor Frye, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and and thanks, Speaker. I appreciate you bringing up that that point that was very salient and appropriate about the Suncor Onya site at the corner of Hastings and Commercial, indeed. Uh that's that's an important site now and I look forward to hopefully us seeing this come that particular site come forward to us. I I was hoping you could speak a little bit more about about the sort of important, there's we've we've had a few emails suggesting, "Why not just eliminate the childcare and reduce the the height of this building as proposed by one story?" And and I was hoping you could touch on, A, uh the notion of of just how many indigenous families are living in this area already and 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 the population growth, the 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 youth explosion, as it were, of uh of young people and 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 children in the community and 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 why we, what what's different about sort of specialized indigenous-focused early childhood care?
Um I can certainly speak to some of that. I I don't profess to be um uh up to date on all of the uh demographic specifics. Um we we do run um two Aboriginal-focused uh childcare programs um in East Vancouver. One is on Hastings um and Princess and one is over um at Grandview School. Um and both of our programs um consistently are full, but at the same time, um our programs are preschool programs and not childcare programs. And um all of our families consistently ask for us to be moving towards childcare and we have funding restriction, uh our funder is is restricting us to a particular model. Um and so this is an opportunity to be able to answer to the community need um around childcare. I also know that um Hook Bay, which is around the corner from the site, um and uh they have a childcare and an after-school care program onsite that's run by Britannia, but they don't, their children at that school do not have priority in accessing those childcare programs that are actually onsite of their program. So there's um very few opportunities for indigenous families to access local childcare, um particularly if they're just moving into um into the community. And um in general, we know that the wait lists are incredibly long. This program, all of our programs um are specifically um geared to support indigenous families around lower low barriers and the costs of the fees will be um specifically set to support um the families and um our staff will be trained in helping them access all of the funding necessary in order to make sure that um access to the childcare is low barrier. Um indigenous childcare is um very uh strongly focused around uh community uh support uh community involvement and um family-centered support. Um and uh we make every effort to hire um as many indigenous educators as we possibly can in our childcare program. I hope that answered your question.
It does. It touches on the whole circle of the child idea and I really appreciate you uh coming and joining us to speak specifically to this. So I think it's an important part of this proposal project. Thank you very much.
Thanks. And that's it. Uh oh, we've got councillor Blye. Uh also has questions. Up to five minutes. Councillor Blye?
Thanks very much. Um and I I appreciate um hearing from you. I'm sorry I missed your last name, but to the speaker, thank you so much for um sharing your thoughts on this aspect aspect of the development. It certainly has stood out to me in my time um working on boards for not-for-profit childcare societies. I just wonder, I'm just gonna be very straightforward with my question. Is if a if an after-school, before and after-school childcare um is serving, let's say, five or six five-year-olds to, I think the average age, they say, is thirteen, in an absence of those childcare spaces being available where one or two parents are needing to work to take care of their families, what is the likelihood or what's the average age where kids start to be left on their own if childcare can't be found?
Um so uh typical childcare uh after-school care is five to twelve. Um so uh children after the age of twelve are um uh not within the the licensed uh context, they become too old and they age out of that situation. Um I mean, I think that that's a difficult question to ask about when parents um start leaving their children um on their own without childcare, uh because, you know, we do have um we do have regulations around that as well. And so um I believe that uh I know that there was a recent case where um a father was sending his his children to school on um public transit in Vancouver and um and community members found that concerning and reported him. Um and he was no longer allowed to send his children independently um to school. And I believe that uh ten was too young. So I believe that you really do um find it difficult to have your children on their own until they're over the age of um eleven or twelve years old. But I can't promise you that I know the specific regulations um in line with that um age category. I I think lots of parents find themselves doing it because they have to and they can't find proper accommodation for their children.
Yeah, and I appreciate on you... Yeah, I mean, it's very anecdotal, but I think there's a trend and it's something that is um impactful to families and children um when there's uh um sort of a high need to be working and getting your kids taken care of. It's very difficult. Um I think there was an appeal to that case, by the way, and he won. So uh he was allowed... Yeah, but it's easily...
But I mean, the damage done to his family and to his children was significant, you know, in that process. And I think our society is still seeing that children under the age of twelve are too young to be on their own. And at the same time, pressures for uh parents to find childcare or um you know, let their kids hang on for a couple of hours until they get home is quite high.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, I appreciate you coming to speak. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. And um I think that's it for questions. Yeah, thank you so much. Uh that's it for questions this evening. Uh I believe we have another speaker, Matthew Norris.
Hi, Matthew Norris. Nita, Niti Gashwan, Lacraun, Jocelynita. Uh hello, everyone. My name is Matthew Norris. I'm uh Tehehtau, Tewi Six, uh member of the Lacraun First Nation, Northern Saskatchewan. I am a resident of Vancouver, of the Grandview Woodlands area, and I am president of the Urban Native Youth Association uh located in Hastings and Commercial. Uh I'm here to speak in support of this project. Uh Vancouver is in desperate need of creating a welcoming, aesthetically pleasing and safe indigenous community within the boundaries of the city. The community around Commercial and Hastings has been an indigenous community for decades, with a long lineage of amazing individuals who call this community home, saying that this community is at risk of rising housing prices and the displacement of pushing the urban indigenous community out to the margins of the city. Numerous amazing community organizations call this neighborhood home and serve the urban indigenous community well, be it the Urban Native Youth Association, the Friendship Centre, or many others within the neighborhood. Uh both of these organizations are vulnerable to the rising housing prices and displacement of the urban indigenous community. The synergy of having the all these organizations in a close uh locality creates a a fantastic opportunity to create an indigenous gateway to Vancouver, to solidify the urban indigenous community within the city, to celebrate the survival and strength of this community. We need to put words and commitments to action if we are to achieve redress for the ongoing marginalization and discrimination of indigenous peoples within this country and within this city. I term mine council that the city has previously endorsed the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, uh which states in Article twenty-three, "The indigenous peoples have the right to determine and develop priorities and strategies for exercising their rights to development." In Article thirty-two, Clause one, which states, "Indigenous people have the right to determine and develop priorities and strategies for the development or use of their lands and territories." The Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada called on Canadian municipalities to action these human rights standards and approving this project was a small step in the right direction. Finally, I would question and caution against the argument of some of those who spoke uh before me who oppose this project based on their reliance on community plans. These plans often are disproportionately favored and are informed by non-indigenous community members and voices, while the participation of indigenous individuals are meet numerous and disproportionate obstacles which impede our our abilities to participate in such projects or public planning processes. Uh I'll leave my comments short as uh the night is getting late. So I want to thank you all for your time and would welcome any questions, kind of, if I'm...
Thank you so much. Uh we do have a question for you from councillor Boyle. Please go ahead, councillor Boyle.
Thank you um for phoning in, Mr. Norris. I just wanted to confirm, uh um there there were some previous speakers suggesting that this housing could be built uh on the site where Onya is uh has been working for many, many years with many partners on a important community project. So uh I guess I'm wondering if there's anything more we should uh council should know about that or what's being uh what's already planned and in the works for that uh particular site?
Well, I think uh my first response would be that uh there's such a need for uh indigenous housing, specifically for the urban indigenous uh population, uh that is built around kind of community-centric services and programs. And so to limit to one site or the other um seems uh inappropriate. I would also caution against kind of pitting uh indigenous organizations against one another uh for uh land sites when when uh these sites are already so few and par between. Uh there are the site, X Commercial in Hastings, that Onya is involved in, has a specific youth, uh which is an urban indigenous youth center um that will provide programming and services for vulnerable and at-risk uh youth within the city, which would be uh which is a well-needed uh and necessary. Um so I don't see, I don't see the two projects as being one-on-one replacements and I actually see them as complementing each other very well and both being uh needed in their entirety.
Okay, great. Thank you for taking the time to uh to sign up and speak so late on Thursday night.
Thank you so much. Uh thank you. There are no other questions for you, so I'm gonna move to the next speaker. I have Jimmy Jenny Chang.
I am a resident of Vancouver. Um I may be the last one to speak because I debated a long time on whether to speak or not because the value has a high value, the project has such a high value. However, at the end, unfortunately, I would have to oppose this uh project. So I'm opposed to this rezoning application, not because of the proposal itself, but the process that leads up to it. I find that uh the process leading to this needs to be respected, yet the community consultation and the community plan, all the work that was put in, it's they are not respected and therefore I'm opposed to this project. Thank you.
Okay, uh thank you so much. I I don't see any questions for you, so we'll um we'll thank you for your uh contribution this evening. Um clerks, anybody else on the line?
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm just double checking.
Okay.
No one else is on the line for this item.
Okay, uh council, we're gonna close the speakers list as a few or no public comments were received on this item after five P.M. Um we're gonna close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments and asking further stuff, the questions of staff. Um so I'm gonna ask the applicant, uh applicant, do you have any closing comments?
Uh no, we just wanted to thank uh council and the public for discussing the project. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Uh staff, do you have any closing comments?
No, we do not. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm gonna go to council now. Council, do you have any uh questions for staff? Councillor Hardwick, uh up to five minutes.
I have a number of questions for staff. I just wanted to clarify, um the mayor commented that that the former building had burned to gr- to the ground. This did not burn to the ground, right? It's still standing? The existing building?
Yes, the building is still standing, but it is currently vacant as it's damaged by the fire.
Damaged by the fire, but not burned to the ground. Thank you. Um I'd like to pick up on a comment that you made, I believe it was you, earlier about the project viability. Um this is really the crux of the matter for me. We've heard uh you know, amply from the community that the process around the the community plan is is offside with this. But presumably, the rationale for putting aside the community plan is that this is a special case. But what you said was that the the issue was really around project viability. And I was wondering if you could elaborate on what makes this project viable that wouldn't be viable under the uh community plan uh height of six stories? I think it was, can't remember what the F S, two-point-four F S R.
Uh thanks for the question, councils. Yarda McNeil, Assistant Director of Planning for Rezoning. Um the project is compliant with the policy, as we noted earlier, which allows for increases in height and density for social housing. The applicant has indicated that this is the scale of the billing that they need in order to deliver the program that they intend to deliver. Um and they have spoke earlier, uh council, about the affordability rates and their continual seeking to find deeper levels of affordability for the project. That all combined, in in addition to the wording within the policy, staff have interpreted to be an acceptable application and we support it moving forward.
But just to be really, really clear here, um because that contradicts what I understood from the speakers and the uh about the Grandview Woodlands plan and the heightened density that was specified for this area, which was six stories and two-point-four F S R, correct?
Um uh council, there are two provisions within. One is the the main provision for the area if you're building strata condos, and you're right in that, it's six stories. But by when you look at the uh Section seven and the community plan, it clearly implies and supports the additional density and height for the delivery of new social housing. And that is the doorway in by which this application was considered to be compliant with the policy. And we've gone forward with the three-story addition.
So if this was a market condo, it would not be, you would, it would not have come forward?
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh councillor Carr, up to five.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um I'm gonna pick up where councillor Hardwick uh left off. Um um the project, um it may not be on a map in the plan, but does it take direction from Section seven-point-one-point-three of the plan regarding existing non-market housing sites? And I I will quote from the plan, "To work with partners on existing non-market housing sites to facilitate retention of this critical source of housing supply."
Uh yes, that's correct.
Okay. Um and I think um in in response to councillor Hardwick, you did note the um the importance of the affordability. So the addition, I'm just verifying, the additional height um is uh essential for the... So the addition, I'm just verifying, the additional height is essential for the deeper affordability of this project? Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And finally, one speaker said that the upper three stories being recessed means the building will likely appear as a six-story as you walk along the street. Steph, do you have an opinion on that? Is that, do you think that that's, that would be true?
It is set back at the upper three floors, and so the street wall, which is the part of the building that comes forward closer to the sidewalk and is more evident from a pedestrian perspective, presents itself as a three-story building.
Six.
A six-story building, sorry. But it is absolutely a nine-story structure, and staff have worked with the applicant to increase the side yard so that it's sitting on a smaller footprint than if it came in under a strata project, and it's set back on the seventh, eighth, and ninth floor to diminish the appearance of that nine stories. And we feel those moves in general have really helped to mediate its scale with the surrounding context.
Great. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thanks. Councillor Fry, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Actually, I have no further questions. I was prepared to just move the recommendations.
Okay, we do have councillor Boyle on the list.
Oh, sorry. I'm not looking at the list. Okay.
Okay, thanks councillor Boyle, up to five minutes.
Actually, I also was just keen to move the recommendations, but happy to second it if councillor Fry wants to go ahead.
Okay, well, we don't have anybody on the list, so somebody please move the recommendation.
Fry, move the recommendations.
Okay, thanks councillor Boyle.
I'm happy to second.
Thanks. Okay, so we'll move on to debate and decision. I'm just going to move us over to the main queue, sorry. Please put yourself back on. Councillor Boyle, up to five minutes, please.
Thanks. I am happy to speak in support of this proposal for a long list of reasons, and I will just highlight a few of them. I think that we, that this neighbourhood, which is my neighbourhood, as many on council and our regular listeners and participants know, I live in Grandview Woodlands as well. I would be delighted to have more indigenous-owned and operated family housing in the neighbourhood. It's such an incredible part of the history of this neighbourhood, and having more homes for indigenous families in the neighbourhood is important to me as a resident, and I know it's an important part of the housing need in the city, and so I'm happy to see those 84 social housing units being proposed in this project. Also, the childcare, before and after-school care is badly needed in this neighbourhood as it is all across the city. I particularly am moved by the ceremonial space that will be in the building and look forward to getting to visit it one day. That too is a critical need in terms of community-oriented, indigenous-rooted housing, and I think such a powerful component of this proposed building. And the fact that it's a passive house project feels like just an additional bonus to what is, I think, a great project that will add great character to a neighbourhood that so many love already. So very happy to support it and grateful to all of the organisations, Vancouver Native Housing Society, and the many partners who have got it this far and who will bring it about as an important part of our neighbourhood and our city. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Carr.
Great. Just somewhat a hard decision for me, just because I was on council when the Grandview Woodlands Plan, planning process was on and culminated. So hearing residents like Jack King speak to us and raising his concerns, you know, it brings back those memories, and I do have to say, it was a highly divisive process, culminating in my mind with just an unbelievable situation where members of this sort of city-determined representative citizens' assembly actually came into council and said, "You should listen to us and what we've decided about the plan and not listen to the regular residents of Grandview Woodlands neighbourhood who spent years working on these issues, that we are the representative body." That was really, really hard to hear. I didn't end up voting for the plan for largely that reason. However, I'm obligated, as you, as we all are, to make a decision based on our best judgment and whether or not it fits in the general directions, not only in our planning department's documents, sorry, but also, I think, city policies and objectives. The Grandview Woodlands Plan, as I asked staff in the last set of questions, does specifically in Section 7.1.3, quote, "allow development of existing non-market housing properties to provide additional height and density with the goal of preserving and increasing affordability over the long term." And I think that is a pivotal piece of the plan that provides the context for this, for this particular application. Also in Section 7.1.3, there is a key direction in the plan that this project advances, specifically, quote, "recognizing opportunities to achieve a diversity of housing forms and approaches to meet the needs," sorry, "the range of needs for urban Aboriginal residents," going on to say, "to seek specially culturally supportive considerations for housing for urban Aboriginal youth, singles, and families." We are a city that is deeply committed to being a city of reconciliation, and a city that is also committed to addressing affordable housing and climate emergencies. And so I'm just going to detail the pieces of this project which lead me to be supportive of it. Number one, it is an indigenous-led development of housing for indigenous individuals and families, a clear direction from the plan. Two, it has culturally significant amenities, cultural spaces, ceremonial spaces, that it would be wonderful to include possibly a sweat lodge. Three, it has onsite before and after-school childcare, specifically for indigenous families, addressing a very, very critical need in that community and in the city as a whole. Four, it is deeply affordable, highly subsidized, 100% rent geared-to-income housing, enabled, as staff have pointed out, by that extra height. And affordable housing is, I think, on the minds of virtually every Vancouver resident has a very deeply felt need. And finally, fifth, it's designed to the highest standards for sustainable housing, timber-framed passive house standard. So it is for those reasons that I will be supporting this project.
Thank you so much. Councillor Swanson.
Yeah, so this is going to sound a little bit redundant, but in this case, we have a special opportunity. I think it just checks all the boxes. Eighty-four units of desperately, desperately needed affordable social housing, rent geared-to-income, childcare, it's passive for the climate, it's got facilities for use, for indigenous culture, and the right of first refusal for the folks who used to live there and got burnt out. I think that caring about the physical appearance of a building is a real luxury. I know I've lived in about thirty places in my life, and I have never cared what the building looked like. I cared, was it close to work? Did the roof leak? Did the plumbing work? Can I afford it? I live in a building now that some would probably regard as ugly, but I love it, and it's mostly because of the neighbours, but also because it's nice and secure and affordable and everything works. And I think that after the building gets built, probably this is the way people will feel about it. In this building is actually a beautiful building, and it's also good that it's not on an arterial. We're getting lots of research now that shows that living within 50 metres of an arterial is bad for your health, causes, is linked to various diseases like dementia, autism, breathing disorders. Could we use the other site on Commercial on Hastings instead of this one? We need both sites. We desperately need social housing, we desperately need indigenous services, we shouldn't be shunting one building over to another site, because that means that site can't be used for what they need to use it for there. Yeah, so I definitely support this, and thanks to all the folks for working so hard to pull it together.
Councillor Fry, up to five minutes.
Thanks, Mayor, and echoing my colleagues, happy to support this, really excited to support this, actually. I appreciate councillor Carr articulating how this is accommodated in the Grandview Woodlands Plan, and councillor Swanson for acknowledging that this is actually quite a beautiful building, and, you know, actually quite stunning, and I think with the amenities that it provides is really, really a great addition to any neighbourhood, and in particular to this neighbourhood, because of the amenities and the childcare and the secure dignified housing. And I know that it is unfortunate that folks who are, you know, caring about their neighbourhood and want to ensure that their neighbourhood is the best it can be, and that we are adhering to the sort of principles that were outlined in the plan, and I think as councillor Carr illustrated, that these do adhere to the principles of the plan, and to the concerns around the fabric of the neighbourhood and the scale of the building. You know, I look at the West End and I look at the fabric of that neighbourhood with the variety of housing tenures and stocks and scales and sizes, and I do consider the West End to be one of the most vibrant neighbourhoods in the country, let alone the city. So I think that the scale of a building does not determine the vibrancy of the neighbourhood, and I think this is, this building actually fits quite well. And of course, to the notion of swapping this out with the Suncor site that the city and Anya are hopeful about building some great new facilities there, I don't think that's even a starter in this case. And, you know, I'm really excited to see McCullough Developments in the seat on this one, because I've followed the work of McCullough, they're quite prominent on the Vancouver Island, and they really do a lot of amazing work that is really couched in the indigenous experience, and they do some fantastic work and some really different work. And in this project, I see a lot of that reflected, and I think that it's really going to be a heck of a fantastic place to live. And, you know, I consider this an extension of my neighbourhood. I live in Strathcona, this is, you know, a lot of the kids from this neighbourhood come to Raycam and vice versa, and I'm in the Britannia catchment, so this is also my neighbourhood, and I'm really excited to see this addition to the neighbourhood. And as I walk around my neighbourhood and I contemplate the situation with indigenous folks in our city, who are disproportionately overrepresented in the homeless population, disproportionately overrepresented in the overpoliced and incarcerated population, disproportionately represented in the addicted population. As a city of reconciliation, I hope that we can strive towards having indigenous people disproportionately represented in the awesome housing population, because I think this is an awesome housing piece, and I think that this is really a wonderful addition to our housing continuum, and I look forward to seeing it built, and I look forward to it really integrating well with this community, because I think it's going to be a great fit for the community. And it may seem like a loss right now for members of the community who spoke against this, but I think time will tell, it is actually going to be a fantastic asset, a real win for the community. So, thanks, we'll be supporting.
Thank you councillor Hardwick.
Thank you. Well, this is, this is a complicated one. When I look at the building, the design is fantastic. I really appreciated the basket design elements in the, in the overall design of the building, the cultural amenities, sweat lodge, potential childcare, all of these are in the plus column. The real challenge for me, though, is about what this says to the community, and that, you know, I'm concerned that this is like saying that the whole Vancouver Plan project will be a waste of time if it's treated the same way from the standpoint of residents. And I think that's something that we as a council have to really think carefully about. Could this have been accomplished at the six stories and not gone up the extra three? I think there is provision, as I'm satisfied in my questioning of staff, that it is provided for. But I am concerned about exceeding the rate of change. Now, if this had been a market condo, I wouldn't have been as open-minded to it, because I see the massive amount of rezoning as having contributed to inflationary land lift on an exponential basis, which has really been a major factor in increasing the land values across the city and therefore exacerbating the affordability problem. But in this case, it's not, it's not there looking to make money. It's not a profit-driven enterprise, and it's not using a portion of its rental or, under the guise of affordability, that seems to me to be the real deal. And I just wanted to really say that I do think that the project has value, I think that there's been some exceptional work done here, there's no question that the Grandview Woodlands is the right place. But I am troubled by our willingness to just put the community planning process, which is not, five years is not a long time, I'm sorry. And I am, I just, in my final comment, I am a little bit troubled by the notion that buildings should only have a 35-year lifespan. That seems awfully short to me, and if that's where we're going in our building programmes, that's something that we ought to be looking at more closely. But on balance, I think this is a good development, but I did want to speak out on behalf of what I've heard from the community and acknowledge that they're feeling that they're not being heard. Thank you.
Councillor Boyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I really like this project. I'll be voting in support of it. I think that the childcare aspect of the development and the benefits of that will return itself to the community over and over again. There's nothing like, as we've heard in many childcare conversations, what it means to try and get kids out the door at seven in the morning and on a bus to go find wherever their temporary care is, to get them to school, after-school, looking for, "Who am I going to go with? Oh, I'm going with this person to stay." I can't even tell you the impact that that has on families, and to think that there are 30 units in this building that are geared towards families and 20 spaces on-site will be remarkable for the families that get to live in this development. In a day-to-day, every single day, their lives will be better because that is available to them. So for me, I appreciate the challenges with these community plans and the objections that it brings up, that when we're looking at a crisis, really, when it comes to oftentimes indigenous mothers with children looking for housing, we just can't look beyond that need, I don't think, and justify not voting in favour of this project, because, you know, that it challenges a plan from five years ago. So I'm really enthusiastically supportive of this project. Do appreciate all the speakers coming out to speak, of course, in support and in opposition, but I'm very confident that this is the right vote forward for this particular development. Thank you.
Councillor Domenado.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to the applicant for all the details this evening and the staff, as well as to the residents who came out both in support and in opposition to this proposal. I fear that I may sound a bit repetitive to my colleagues, but I will make a few comments. I appreciate that both staff and some of my colleagues clarified the policy, because I do know that was a question that was raised in advance of this public hearing, but again, tonight was around compliance with existing policy as well as with the Grandview Woodlands neighbourhood plan. I appreciate that that was clarified, and recognizing that, I know there's a few people who had asked if many of us had been in that neighbourhood, and like many of my colleagues, I actually spent quite a good deal of time in that neighbourhood. I live nearby in Hastings Sunrise, but I often frequent the neighbourhood for shopping and to visit friends of mine, so I know the area quite well. It's eclectic, and I do appreciate some of the consternation that people have in terms of that plan, and councillor Carr really did articulate that well, the tension and some of the division that arose from the citizens' assembly work in the area and that we still experience in some of the projects that come forward today. But for me, you know, I see the immense benefits in this in terms of the housing, the social housing component. social housing component and the affordability depths, the fact that it is Indigenous housing that will serve our urban Indigenous community and that is an enormous part of the conversation around reconciliation. The before and after school care is also a fantastic part of this. I will tell you as a parent to children, having done the, the, you know, the childcare of zero to five, but also before and after school care, it was one of the most stressful endeavours. And I had spreadsheets and Excel lists trying to find places and locations and it's extremely, because you're placing your children in care and not having that is incredibly stressful when you have to go to work and you need that to earn a living, to pay your bills. And so the fact that this will be integrated as part of the housing, I think is, you know, fantastic and is a real benefit. I also appreciated the comments around the culturally significant spaces. I think that's also another benefit. And really like the icing on this was the passive house and the mass timber. And we've been having a lot of conversations about that lately around the benefits and opportunities that come with mass timber from a climate perspective. So across the board, I sort of see it as a win-win-win. And, and I recognise that, that it will be a change for the community and for the neighbourhood. But I also, like my colleagues, see that, you know, probably 10 years down the road, everyone's gonna go, wow, that was amazing, you know, we should have done more of that. And, and it's a spectacular building, just the design in itself. But I think it'll take time, but I do actually think it's gonna be fantastic. And I, I'll leave you with this, is I think that it'll be a sense of pride as well. I was at the renaming as a trustee to this Ape School. And I remember the children and the families and how proud they were when we undertook the renaming of the school there. And I think similarly, when this building is complete and those families relocate, move back in and new families, there will be a great sense of pride and belonging. And I think that's another piece of this that is, is priceless, right? You can't put a price on. So I, I think great work by all and I'm going to support the proposal.
Councillor Wheat.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments from my colleagues. And I want to thank everyone that spent those thousands of hours in community rooms to develop the plan for the area and recognising that this is a challenging project in coming in outside of that. However, it's delivering on so many of the priorities of our council. The main one for me is the decolonising of some of the space. It's the first one I've ever seen that has log seating under Aspen Woodland with native understory planting. And just the idea of have ceremonial amenity spaces like the sweat lodge and just side gardens and some of the work. I mean, our goal here at council is to determine if these projects make our city better. And I think this one does for many reasons spoken before, so I will be supportive. Thank you.
Councillor Dejanova.
Thanks so much. I, I'm going to risk also echoing some of the, well, I will echo and hopefully not be too repetitive, but I think that this is important and I want to say this. Not only do I support this project, but I think that there are a number of key components that, you know, represent leadership in this project. And I hope that we will see this in projects moving forward. I hope that we will even see nonprofits that perhaps were timid and maybe unwilling to take the risk in moving forward with an application like this, you know, do so because of this project. If it's approved tonight, and I think, I think we're, we're there from the comments that I've heard, but I think that it's, it's really important for a number of reasons. And I'll try not to reiterate all of them, but definitely Indigenous housing and Indigenous-led housing and the culturally significant space is really important. I think that also, as, as we've heard tonight from people who represent the Indigenous community and are Indigenous, that this is a place that they feel will not only have meaning, but provide affordable housing and possibly even intergenerational living opportunities. It's extremely important. And, you know, to, to the Grandview Woodlands Plan, I understand, you know, very well where the community sits. I remember very well being on council last term, you know, some of the struggles that it took to get to a plan that still might not be perfect. But I look at organisations like The Kettle that can't continue in the neighbourhood perhaps. And I don't think that we can afford to lose any more opportunities for affordable housing, for services. And I also think that we, you know, we have made a commitment as a city of reconciliation. And we can talk about reconciliation, we've had a year of reconciliation. But if we truly want to be a city of reconciliation, we need to empower nonprofits, we need to empower Indigenous-led housing, and we need to do that in our actions, not only our words. So I think that this is very important. And lastly, on the childcare. I have been sitting as the representative for the city of Vancouver on the Housing Committee at Metro Vancouver. I had recently brought forward a motion on a project to include or consider including, instead of commercial or retail space, include childcare. And then that turned into asking staff to explore this in all of our developments because affordable housing and childcare go hand in hand. And, you know, not to belabor it, but to echo some of the comments of my colleagues, I too, in fact, I wasn't on camera this evening because I had some childcare issues. And I was listening to every word. And I have to say, I think that co-locating childcare and housing is extremely important. It empowers people, it can be the difference between allowing people to live in our city or not. So having that along with the culturally significant space, empowering families to just have that extra assurance that there will be childcare close by and available to them, I think is very important. And then lastly, I think that it's also important to remember that these projects work because of a particular formula, and that's density. And I think that was very well said by Jill Ackey tonight in her comments from BC Nonprofit Housing Association. So for those reasons and, and more, but I won't go on further, I wholeheartedly support this project and will be voting in favour. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm gonna turn the chair over to Deputy Mayor Carr, if you could take, take the reins.
Yeah, no problem. Mayor Stewart, and I see that you're on the speakers list, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you very much. I think this will be my favourite yes vote of, of my time on council so far because I see this as the future of Vancouver. It is densifying an area in a, in a palatable way that needs some more density. It, it's keeping families together, it is a sustainable building, it is an integrated building, it, 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 it's designed with the people who will be in it in mind. And most importantly for me, it is what reconciliation really looks like. And so I'm really, really proud that I'll be able to vote yes for that, this and really congratulate the proponents and city staff for bringing this forward. It does comply with the Grandview Woodlands Plan from what I can see, from what the staff have explained. It doesn't violate any premise. And in fact, this is really, I would suggest what, what the plan was supposed to do was to have leeway when we have fantastic projects like this. I, I'm a little sad too. I, I think from what we've heard tonight that we've got a long way to go in terms of understanding what reconciliation really means. And I remember I used to sit on the Aboriginal Issues Committee in, in Ottawa, that's what it was called then. And it was all white guys, sitting around making all the decisions about what happens with the Indian Act and whatnot. And then I remember when Romeo Saginaw came and started sitting on the committee and the entire tone of the discussions changed. The politics of presence is so important. And I think as a council, we, we do have to kind of keep that in mind as we go through what we're deciding here, is that the legacy of the colonial past is heavy and we carry that burden. And we have to make sure that we're worthy of moving forward and living up to the standards we've set for ourselves. So I, I really hope this, this passes this evening, it sounds like it will. But, but I can't wait to see this blossom and be really the, the symbol of, of going forward in this city. So thank you so much to the proponents and staff and all who spoke this evening. And that's it for me.
Okay, you can resume the chair.
Thank you very much. And that's it, council for speakers, so we'll go to the vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, council, for that. Let's see, we're at nine twenty-one. We have five billion people signed up to speak to, to these next two items. Just, you might give me a second to confer with the clerk about how we move forward here. And perhaps, council, if you'd just give me about five minutes, we need to change over a bunch of things. But yeah, so if you give me until nine twenty-five, I'll be right back. Doesn't look like we're gonna get to item three this evening, so I'm just saying that so speakers will know and, and that'll be referred to the next meeting. Clerks, when is that one? When is the, the next?
It is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, and the reserved day we have is Tuesday, February sixteenth, starting at six PM.
Okay, so if we could also tweet out and just let speakers know for item three, that, that will not happen this evening. Council, what I'm proposing is we just try to get, we do have 12 speakers signed up and maybe more waiting to speak to this next item. So I suggest we just move ahead with the staff presentation and then see where we get to.
Point of procedure, Mr Mayor?
Yeah, councillor Dejanova.
I'm not sure which part of the procedure this would be, but how long is the staff presentation, just so that the speakers could have a heads up? Is there any way, maybe as a point of information, I'm sorry, I'll put myself on.
Twenty-one slides. So, and, and the thing is, we have questions always to the staff or applicant beforehand, so I don't have any idea how, how many questions everybody's gonna ask. So I'm just gonna start moving ahead. I doubt we'll get through our list, so if you're at the end of the list, unless we extend past ten o'clock.
It, it was just a point of, I'm sorry, I have a point of information, Mr Mayor, but I see others on the queue, so I'll reserve that until you get through that quickly.
We don't, we don't have points of information at this stage, you need the floor for that? So procedure or points of order or?
I guess it's a point of procedure, just to, I just wanted to, I, I think it's good to notify the speakers if we're not going to get to them tonight.
We've tweeted out that item three is done and we may get to a speaker or two, but it all depends how many questions council answers. So that's, that's the best information I give at the moment. So before we begin to any councillor, this is ten fifteen Hastings, East Hastings Street. Anybody wish to declare a conflict of interest? Okay, so we're gonna get the clerk to read the application and summary of correspondence.
This is an application by Low Hammond Row Architects Incorporated to rezone one zero one five East Hastings Street from M1 Industrial District to CD1 Comprehensive District to permit a 15-storey mixed-use building containing 110 social housing units, of which 25 would have support services, 53 secured market rental units, an 80-bed shelter and a social enterprise space. Building height of 51 metres and an FSR of 6.9 are proposed. The general manager of Planning Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to the conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the, prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. Sixteen pieces of correspondence in support and 10 pieces of correspondence in opposition. This represents all correspondence received up to four PM today.
Thanks so much. So we have Marcel Jeline from the Rezoning Centre with a presentation. And can we invite you to come and go through the presentation, please?
Sure, thank you. You can hear me okay?
Sure can.
Great. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Marcel Jeline, rezoning. My name is Marcel Jeline, rezoning planner for this application at ten fifteen East Hastings Street, which proposes to rezone the site under the downtown east side plan. The site is a single parcel on the northwest corner of East Hastings Street and Glen Drive. The base zoning is M one industrial, as are sites to the east and south. To the north, it is zoned M two industrial. Both M one and M two zoning permit development up to a hundred feet and an F S R of five point zero. Under this zoning, the area is comprised of one, of older one and two-story buildings with vacant land and surface parking. The property to the west was rezoned to C D one in twenty twelve and permits maximum height of a hundred and twenty feet and a density of six point one five F S R. The development includes markets and non-market units, industrial flex space and commercial uses at grade. The site is a vacant parcel that sits approximately eight twenty-two feet below grade and adjacent to the Hastings Street viaduct. It is an irregular shape with the C N rail right of way along the western property line. The site abuts, abuts the viaduct and cross slopes approximately twenty-two feet from the southeast corner to the northwest corner. In this image, you will see the twelve-story C D one building located directly west of the proposed site. The property is comprised of one legal parcel with an area of nearly twenty-three thousand square feet. Its approximate dimensions are a hundred and sixty-four feet on Hastings Street and a hundred and twenty-two feet on Glen Drive. The existing rail track is approximately fifteen feet from the western property line and services the port of Vancouver. A sixteen and a half foot dedication to C N rail infrastructure is required along the site's western property line adjacent to it, to an existing right of way. The proposed development is within a fifteen-minute walk of a range of amenities, including Raycam Cooperative Center, Britannia Community Center, Strathcona Public Library, Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Center, ANYA, Rapid Bus Transit, childcare providers and, and three parks. The site is in the catchment of Admiral Seymour Elementary School and Britannia Community Secondary, which both currently have capacity. Rezoning potential for the site is guided by the downtown east side plan, which provides a vision, policies and strategies for the downtown east side that focus on ways to improve the lives of low-income residents and community members. The plan identifies that forty-four hundred new social housing units are required over thirty years to meet the current and future needs. Furthering the legacy of the year of reconciliation in twenty thirteen fourteen, the downtown east side plan pays particular attention to indigenous placemaking through the form of innovative intergenerational indigenous housing projects, programming, public art, with establishment of a new community amenity, which could include a healing and wellness center. The site is located in the Hastings east sub-area of the plan. The rezoning policy, policy for the area supports the development of a mixed-use neighborhood with the goal to maximize the delivery of twenty percent to thirty percent onsite social housing and to encourage a mix of commercial and retail uses at grade. In January twenty sixteen, upon receiving Metro Vancouver Aboriginal Executive Council's, or M VAC, Aboriginal Housing and Wellness Strategy, Mayor and council agreed to call on provincial and federal governments to maintain and increase the housing and wellness capacity for urban Aboriginal people in Vancouver. Additionally, council agreed in principle to the development of a mixed-use project that collate, collate, co-locates a permanent shelter, health services, along with social and supportive housing at ten fifteen East Hastings Street as part of the recommended actions to respond, to respond to the M VAC's Aboriginal Housing and Wellness Strategy. Built foreign policies for the sub-area along Hastings Street from Canable Ave to Clark, to Clark Drive prescribe a recommended height and density of forty-five to a hundred and twenty feet and a density of two point five to six point zero F S R. However, the plan provides a broad height and density range for developments of, of up to a hundred and fifty feet and an F S R of seven point zero, depending on the site size, location, neighborhood and urban design considerations for the provision of social housing through rezoning. This application meets the objectives of a memorandum of understanding signed in twenty-six, twenty seventeen by the city of Vancouver and B C Housing. The M O U outlines the intentions to form a cooperative partnership with B C Housing through a ground lease and sets forth the basic business conditions for the site, including Aboriginal shelter and social housing, including a supportive housing portion, as well as the potential for, for market rental housing. This proposal is to rezone the site from M one to C D one for a fifteen-story mixed-use building with a hundred and ten social housing units, of which twenty-five have support services, fifty-three secured market rental units and an eighty-bed shelter and social enterprise space. The building is comprised of two wings, a fifteen-story building that includes the social and supportive units and shelter. The other is thirteen stories and includes the market rental building and social enterprise space that consists of a cafe and bistro. A floor area of approximately a hundred and fifty-eight thousand square feet, density of six point nine F S R and height of a hundred and sixty-seven feet, which is approximately a hundred and fifty-six feet from the corner of Hastings Street and Glen Drive are recommended. Three levels of underground parking with fifty-nine bicycle and three hundred eight bicycle spaces are proposed. Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Center Society will operate the social and supportive housing units, shelter and social enterprise space. The market units will be subleased by B C Housing to a third party at completion to contribute to the cost of delivering the social housing units. The application was submitted to staff for review on June twenty-six, twenty twenty, under the short program. It has taken seven and a half months to bring to public hearing. As part of the restart Smart Vancouver Initiative in response to COVID nineteen, this project will contribute to approximately eight hundred and fifty new onsite and off-site construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. The project was evaluated on the following criteria, including provision of units across the continuum for urban indigenous people, site planning and context, building identity and open space and views. With respect to the provision of housing, staff support the proposed development as it includes housing unit types across the continuum, including shelter, social housing units, including supportive housing units and market rental. The proposed development responds appropriately to site constraints and context, including the railway, slope and viaduct. To the west, the building is set back five meters from the C N rail, C N railway and the majority of the residential units are positioned away from the rail line. The main entrance to the shelter and supportive housing is from the viaduct and adjacent to the private courtyard area. The social housing entrance is further east and set back from Hastings adjacent to the cafe entrance. Off of Glen Drive are the entrances to the market rental and bike repair shop. Loading and parking are off the lane. With respect to building identity, the two wings different heights, along with the rooftop amenity rooms, provide an alternative interpretation of the saw-tooth roof, roof profile, which helps create a distinct roof line. The social enterprise space at the Hastings Glen Corner helps anchor the corner and will support activation of the intersection to become a future vibrant node. The bulk of the building is set back from the viaduct, providing a courtyard for shelter residents and supportive housing units. To help maintain views, the building is set back more than sixty feet from the Hastings Street property line, allowing for a wider aperture to the North Shore Mountains. Further, the courtyard along Hastings visually opens up the otherwise narrow sidewalk. This is a creative way to respond to the existing harsh conditions of the viaduct sidewalk and to lessen impacts on views. This project will exceed the city's definition of social housing with a minimum of sixty-seven percent of the units rented to households with incomes under the B C housing income limits levels or hills. Rents for the social housing component will be set at one-third shelter rates, one-third rent geared to income or hills, as indicated on the blue table, and one, one-third low end of market rents. Rents for the market rental component will be set at market rates for the area. All units would be secured for ninety-nine years as rental. The project is eligible for the D C L waiver for the market rental units in, in the development at the owner's discretion. At this time, the applicant has not determined if they will be taking the D C L waiver. This slide demonstrates the average market rents for newer buildings on the east side in the blue column and the relative affordability of renting when compared to the costs of home ownership shown on the right-hand side in the red column. Although the in-person pre-application open house was canceled and no longer required due to COVID nineteen, the applicant undertook a virtual open house to garner public feedback. Fifteen people submitted comments and questions. A city-led virtual open house was held from July thirteenth to August second, twenty twenty. Three hundred and fifty unique visitors viewed the Shape Your City webpage, a hundred and thirty-six reviewed multiple documents and forty-five engaged individuals reviewed or submitted comment forms and questions. In total, staff received sixty pieces of feedback on the proposed development. Key themes of support included the provision of affordable housing, building design, rooftop amenity space and neighborhood regeneration. Key themes of concern included security and privacy, privacy of residents in the area, location, specifically the concentration of social housing in the downtown east side, building height and density and lack of parks in the area. Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Center is an experienced nonprofit operator and security of the community is paramount to them. Their staff will undertake a number of measures to ensure the safety of both residents and neighbors, including regular morning walkabouts to ensure cleanliness and safety, participation in a community block watch program, and establishment of a community advisory committee with community partners to allow for residents' feedback. With respect to location and the provision of social housing in the downtown east side, should be noted more than half of the residents in the neighborhood are low-income and dependent upon income support, pensions, as well as charitable and social services. As a result, an objective of the plan is to provide a range of social and affordable housing for the homeless and other low and moderate income singles and families. Further, the Hastings east sub-area identifies between Healy Avenue and Clark Drive as largely underdeveloped with the potential to contribute significant housing capacity of mixed tenure. The, the plan supports the creation of social housing in the neighborhood. The proposed uses, site size, location and neighborhood context support the proposed additional density and height. The building directly west at nine fifty-five East Hastings is twelve stories, providing a taller context. With respect to parks, the site is located within eight hundred meter radius of three parks, including McLean Drive, McLean Park, Strathcona Park and Woodland Park. In summary, staff recommends approval of this application to rezone the site from M one to C D one at ten fifteen East Hastings Street. Subject to the conditions outlined in appendix B, as it meets the intent of the downtown east side plan, responds to Metro Vancouver Aboriginal Executive Council's call to action for indigenous housing and wellness and aligns with the M O U between the city and B C Housing for the site. If approved, this application would contribute to the Housing Vancouver Strategy by providing a combined a hundred and sixty-three new social, supportive and market rental housing units, in addition to an eighty-bed shelter and social enterprise space. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Oh, I gotta, folks that may want to go on mute. Just, sorry, just got a note from the clerk here. Okay, we are going now to, we are at ten, sorry, quarter to ten, council. And I guess we should probably figure out if we're going to extend past ten o'clock or not. We do have twelve folks on the speakers list and the way this is going, that's, that's an hour without questions. So I, I'd just like to inform you that I have a seven A M. meeting tomorrow after a seven A M. meeting today. So I'm not inclined to go past ten o'clock, but would like to let speakers know. So, yeah.
I'm not on the speakers, I'm, I'm on the speakers queue, but I'm not sure if that's a holdover. So if I may, I was prepared to move a motion to recess and, in hopes also that we could maybe, I'm prepared to send some questions into staff that might expedite questions to staff. I'm not sure if others are, might want to do the same, but perhaps it might go faster next time around. I know everyone still has the option to ask questions.
Sure, so a motion to recess?
If, and come back at our scheduled reserve date and maybe, Mr. Mayor, as I bring up my calendar, you can remind me as to what that is. And that would be my motion, if that's okay?
That would be Tuesday, February sixteenth at six P M.
Yes, move to recess until then.
Okay, thanks. Do we have a second or for that?
Second.
Okay, I heard a second or, so I'm just going to do yays and nays. All in favor say yay.
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 Oppose say nay. Okay, thanks, council. So we have recessed, where we are in the process is that the, the next step will be the call for the applicant to either present or to make comments. Then we ask questions to staff and the applicant, and then we move to hear from the public. And my apologies to those who have, have been hanging on to this point. But it's always a little unpredictable with each of these projects and we'll do our best to get through the next meeting promptly. So with that, council, just want to thank you so much for all your work this evening, as well as staff and the clerks. And we'll see you at this resumed public hearing next Tuesday at six P M. Thank you so much.
Night, all. Yeah, thanks, everyone. Thanks, staff. Thanks, Mayor. That was counsel.
Night, all. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, staff. Thanks, Mayor. That was Counsel.